To open session, the regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District Board of Education for November 27th, 2018, we have a roll call, please.
President Black.
Here.
Vice President Stapleton Gray.
Here.
Board Member Blanchard.
Here.
Board Member Clark.
Here.
Board Member Tuttain.
Here.
Student Board Member Weinstein.
She's here.
Student Board Member Mala.
Here.
For those who wish to participate, we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, item of business is the approval of the, oh, first item is the reading of the AUSD mission and vision statement.
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment and addressing the individual needs of each student.
Thank you. The board took no action and closed session. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Does anyone want any changes to the agenda? I see none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the consent calendar. There any items on the consent calendar? People want to comment on question or poll? Any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. Can we have a motion?
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent calendar passes. Board and superintendent reports.
Thank you, President Black trustees. On November 17th, the fundraising advisory committee and PTA presidents met with myself and two of my staff members on that Saturday for a workshop, kind of a retreat, to discuss areas for fundraising and ways that we could have some creative ideas for generating revenue and for working collaboratively. So it was a very productive meeting. We met for three hours and we will be meeting again in December so to continue that discussion. I also say that I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving break, will come back, and to check the AUSD calendar of events because as we move into the holiday season, there will be quite a few winter concerts, choir concerts, band concerts, and they're always wonderful to attend from elementary all the way up to high school. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Kim? No? Russ?
Yes, some comment on the situation we had recently with the school closures due to the smoke. Really struck by how little there seemed to be, at least in the way of preparation between the district, the city, other entities, to deal with issues like that. We chose to close the schools and a lot of people were expressing concerns that they don't have childcare coverage, their house is worse to be at than a school building. It got me thinking on issues of school construction. You know, we hadn't really focused on whether or not the schools need HVAC because the air is unbreathable, but a collaboration between the city and the district and any other parties, county, the state, in terms of ensuring that Albany has the capacity to respond to an emergency like that would be a good thing. I won't be on the board, but when the board, I hope, has a board, city council joint meeting, I would love to see that on the agenda. How the city could rely on school buildings, facilities, in times of their need, how we might be able to rely on the city, and ideally how we could rely on others. If, you know, there's a fire at El Street High, could we provide some space, vice versa? That larger community is something that hasn't gotten a lot of attention and I'd like to see more communication than we've had.
Thanks. That could be, for people who are continuing on the board, something to consider as an agenda item for a joint school board, city council meeting in the future. Anyone else? Student Board Member report.
So at AHS, the Albany High School Choir is having their first annual dessert theater on November 30th and December 1st, come out to hear music across many different genres while enjoying all-you-can-eat dessert. And the Jazz Winter Concert will be held on Thursday, December 6th, from 7 to 9. For AMS, come to Albany Middle School's annual craft fair on December 2nd to shop from local crafters and support the Albany Middle School arts and listen to great music provided by the AMS bands, choirs, and orchestras and their concerts that will be happening within the next few weeks, and specific times for each one are on the website.
At Ocean View, families went out to eat at Chipotle on November 16th where a portion of profits were donated to Ocean View Elementary. Pizza Days, a fundraiser for Ocean View, will be selling Little Star Pizza after school on select days in November and December. And the PTA met on November 15th. At Marin, students will come together in the yard to celebrate Marin morning on December 5th. Well Tech Technologies have come to Marin to teach students tech using Legos. Families are gathering food to contribute to the canned food drive that is going on right now at Marin. And then finally, at Cornell, the Books Ink Holiday Shopping Night was held on November 17th, which benefited Cornell Elementary. And the Cornell Winter Craft Fair will occur from 10 to 2 on December 1st. Come to see crafts students have been working on.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the students? Okay, I should mention that Kim and I attended with Michaela and Audrey a gathering, I guess, of students to comment on budget items, and when we talk about the budget, you guys can report on what the student voice is on that. Good. That brings us to, I think, persons to address the board on matters not on the agenda. I know most of you are here to talk about items that are on the agenda, but if there's anyone here to talk about something that's not on the agenda, this is the time. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the first item, a review and discussion item about the Budget Advisory Committee.
Thank you, President Black trustees. At the November 13th, 2018 board meeting, the Budget Advisory Committee presented its report to the school board, and they did share that they did not have enough time to do a real thorough job of examining the implications of the budget reductions. Some of the board members did express a desire to have the Budget Advisory Committee become a standing committee, and the board asked me to agendas this item as a review and discussion to talk about the mission and the structure of the Budget Advisory Committee. So I open it up to the board for discussion.
Okay, Jacob.
Yeah, I just had a real quick comment. At that meeting and in some emails that I've received since then, people are saying that the Budget Advisory Committee made certain recommendations and that they didn't, might not have had the expertise around some of the recommendations, and I just wanted to make it clear, as far as my understanding, those were not the Budget Advisory Committee's recommendations. Maybe I can get some clarification. Those were options you gave them, right Val?
I gave them some options on areas that could be cut, especially in the area of administrative cuts, and then we presented the budget to them. I did give them some ideas about other areas that we could be cutting. The Budget Advisory Committee did ask in one of their meetings for Jackie and I to come up with a list of potential cuts and then to put them into a spreadsheet.
Yeah, but the cuts that you came with were like 1.3 out of a possible 2.5, so they were really left with no options. So when they presented, some people might have got the impression that these are things that they were advocating for, and I don't know if any of them are here to speak for themselves, but for them to put in all that time and then to be told that they don't have expertise to make those recommendations when my understanding is it wasn't their recommendations, I don't think that's fair to them.
So let me clarify. There were more recommendations that were made that would have added up to about $3.1 million in budget cuts, but there was concern over comments that were expressed that some items were considered negotiable, that would have to be negotiated, and therefore that really was not on the table because they could not talk about it because those were negotiable items.
Charlie?
So I would like to speak to that, actually. I attended four of the six budget committee meetings, and I just wanted to say, those folks worked hard, and I really appreciate the effort that they put in. I think, yeah, that's good. I think it would be good to remember the charge that we gave them was explicitly not to make recommendations, and I think they observed that charge, and I think that maybe it's been perceived that they made recommendations. What we actually asked them to do, it's written in the board agenda here, page 30, was to identify potential expenditure reductions to meet the school board's goal to balance the budget and evaluate consequences, pros and cons associated with each, and I think they did this admirably. They really gave us a thoughtful analysis of the positives and negatives, mostly negatives, associated with each of those, and that's what I was hoping for from that committee. So I just wanted to observe that I think they did what we asked them to do, and in fact, I would strongly support continuing, letting them continue the work so that they have more time to process what they said that they just didn't have time to process.
Thanks. I second what Charlie said. I would be happy to have them continue. We could make it a standing committee. Berkeley has a standing Budget Advisory Committee. I think if we make it a standing committee, it should probably be expanded a little bit. We could look for more expertise. We could bring in members of the community, maybe some people who have some experience with the district and have long memory of district budgets, like Charlie, for example.
Thank you.
But I think it's an opportunity to tap into some of the expertise and memories, institutional memory that's contained in the community. So I just suggest that we consider that. Kim?
One of the advisory committee members also spoke in favor of being able to consider new revenue sources, and so I think that we should expand the mission of the committee so that they could also look at revenue streams.
I agree. If it's a standing committee, the mission needs to be expanded because it's not just about balancing the budget this year, it's about, you know, long-term keeping the district afloat. So I don't know if we want to try to wordsmith the mission tonight or just pass on to the next board our recommendation that they constitute a standing budget committee.
President Black, I'd also like to recommend that, one of the comments that I heard was that we had one teacher representative, and if we're going to expand the committee, then I would recommend that we add at least one more teacher so that different grade levels are represented, so maybe high school, middle school, and elementary school, and perhaps a couple of administrators.
Good. So does anyone in the public want to comment on this item?
Yes, please.
Come on up to the podium, please.
No, I don't want to. I just think it's a little.
And I don't want to leave out the classified. I mean, I think we also need to have more classified members on the committee.
Well, I get the impression that the board is in agreement that we should make this recommendation.
Yeah, I think so. I think maybe just parenthetically, we could add that what would probably allow the committee to maintain the momentum it has is to continue with the charge that it has had, at least for the next three or four months. I think the committee really needs to dig in, think about some more possible budget savings measures prior to the second interim budget, which would be February, sometime in February, I guess, and so not to lose any time rather than changing the mission of the committee right now. I think they just should have more time to do what they've been doing, and then the new board can reconstitute the purpose of the committee.
Okay, Jacob?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I only see one person. I think Morgan is in the audience. Is anybody else here from the committee?
I haven't seen anybody else.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anything that you could recommend that we could do to make your time more effective and, if you want to?
Everything you've said is anything I would have said. You reiterated that we asked to be able to create funds, figure out the revenue streams. That, I think, is vital.
Could you pull the microphone?
I'm sorry. Bringing on other classified, other teachers, I think that would be very welcomed. I will say this, I was the newbie, but the other members really, they really know their stuff, and we had all the, everybody has their own want to protect this, and we recognize that, you know, we, there's hard work here, really hard work. And Val, you're doing a great job. I mean, you really are trying to give us some guidance, and I appreciate you, and I just want everyone to know that, you work really hard, and I do appreciate you. So that's all. I mean, everything you've said is everything I would have said, but, you know, there's things that we really do have to protect, and I hope we can create the revenue so we don't have to make some of these cuts. That's it. And you're not the newbie anymore.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so this is not an action item, it's just the sense of the board, I think, that to pass to staff and recommendation for the new board, that the current committee continue through the next interim and that the new board consider reconstituting the committee and rewriting their mission statement to make it a standing committee.
So we will bring this back as a review and discussion item for the new board. We can probably do that in probably early January.
Good.
Wait, Val, you said review and discussion, so you feel that the new board might want to discuss it further rather than bringing it back as review and action?
You know, actually, we could probably put it as a review and action because the board can still discuss it. If the board's pleasure is to bring it as a review and action, I'd be happy to bring it. I'd like to add a little bit more time to that review and action item so the new board does have a chance to discuss.
I think that would be appropriate, given the fact that a lot of things need to happen in the next few months.
Thank you. Okay, we have one quick review and action item, recommendation to designate certificated employees to permanent status.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to turn this over to, I know she's here somewhere, or my Director of Human Resources? Or did she have to leave? Nope. Okay, then I will do it. This is to, in accordance, oh, she's here? There you are. Oh, okay.
This is to move three of our certificated employees to permanent status. Martha Darrell, Adriana Hernandez, and Sean Kratzit.
Any questions from the board? Any comments from the audience? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve this recommendation to designate certificated employees to permanent status.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're now running a little ahead of schedule, but I'm sure we'll take care of that. Next item is superintendent's budget reduction plan.
Thank you, President Black trustees. So at the last board meeting, the Board of Education Budget Advisory Committee, excuse me, presented its report to the school board, and the school board asked me to create a budget reduction plan based upon Table 1 of the reductions of the Budget Advisory Committee report to present it tonight. So can we scroll up, please, to the page of the reductions? Thank you. So part of the Table 1 was the Personal Administration Central Office reductions. It is tied, a total at 481,000. I did, excuse me, under 8, so it's combining Special Education Student Services Departments and reducing one director position. The reconfiguration of the duties includes the promotion of the Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment to Assistant Superintendent, but there will be no salary increase. The Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment has agreed to take on the role and the additional duties without a salary increase. This continues the elimination of the Behavior Specialist position and the Instructional Technology Support position. Under number 2, this was the certificated position for the counselor, and I received a lot of feedback, obviously at the board meeting, as well as feedback to me. And I heard very clearly that to reduce a counselor, especially at the middle school, would be dire, and I'm using that word very carefully because that is the way it was expressed to me, that this wasn't something that could be cut and we could tighten up and, you know, move services elsewhere, that reducing the counselor would have some dire consequences. So I am making the recommendation that this be moved to Table 2. Move that down. I did not move, I did not move anything up from Table 2 to Table 1 specifically because this board advised me or asked me to bring a basic reduction plan for Table 1. Can you scroll down, please? Classified reductions are still 84,000. The non-personnel related reductions are 246,275, and this again is the elimination, food for any district-wide meetings, materials and supplies, four-year student Chromebook refresh, and I know the physical fitness testing is not much. Jackie and her department are going to reach out to our vendors to see if we can have better pricing for materials and supplies. We don't know what that savings would be because it depends on what we can work on with our vendors. Professional development workshops and materials reducing by 100,000, and then traveling conferences, I said eliminate except for anything that is non-essential. There's no dollar amount on that because sometimes we have to send folks to some sort of training. This planned reduction ends up being about $811,000, of which about half is from administrative cuts. None of these cuts at this time on this plan impact the reduction of teachers or reduction of other programs. If I would go into Table 2 and then, of course, Table 3, then you would have more cuts. So for the 811,275, that is not enough to keep us out of qualified status. Okay? And open it to the board for comments, questions.
Okay, take comments from the board, and then we'll open it up to public comment. So who wants to speak? Charlie?
First question would be a follow-up to what you just said, that when we see the first interim budget next meeting, you say that should we adopt this budget reduction plan tonight, it still will not be enough to get us a positive certification at first interim? How far off would we be?
So with this reduction, we will be about 11% for 1920, or 1819, 7.45 for 1920, and 2021, it will be about 1%.
So it's in the third year, and so it'll be critical that the Budget Committee and the district as a whole keep working on potential reductions so that maybe by the second interim, you can have a positive certification. Okay.
Okay, other board members want to comment? Russ?
Sort of a comment on how we're communicating about all this. When Ms. Kim was talking about numbers, she was talking about what percentage reserve we'd have at various points, and the state requires us to have 3% three years out. So if our, if we've got a 7% reserve two years out, that's fine, but if it goes down to 2 or 1 in the third year out, no, that budget, if we presented it to the county, would not fly. So we're talking about having no less than a 3% reserve three years out, that's sort of a must-have. If we make earlier cuts, later cuts, whatever that shape looks like, it's got to be above 3% three years out, or we haven't got a, an acceptable budget to the county or to the state.
Other board members want to comment?
I'll save my comments for after.
Okay, Kim?
Big topic, I'm sure we're going to be discussing this for a long time this evening. I appreciate seeing the 481, the 0.48 million cut at the district office. I'm not sure that this plan is, I would rather, I would rather vote for that in terms of a money total rather than a specific plan. Val, you said at the previous meeting that the superintendent needs to build her district office. I would like to keep that to a total figure. I wouldn't mind if that went just to an even 5.5 million, but I think we need to turn that not into specifics, but leave that to the superintendent's discretion.
Charlie?
So I would endorse what Kim has just said. I think it's the board's job to allocate a total budget, but it's not the board's job to configure staffing at any site, including the district office. And so I would be comfortable with endorsing a $500,000 reduction in district office staffing. I think it's important to keep in mind what that means, actually. We are currently spending 3.4 million on general administration, which is hardly anything higher than it was five years ago when it was 3.37 million. The district office staffing costs went up to $4 million slowly, year by year. Between last year and this year, staff reduced the district office cost by $600,000. So what we're talking about now is a 500,000, a further $500,000 reduction on top of a $600,000 reduction. That's almost a 25% reduction over two years. It's a big reduction, and I think there will be consequences, but I also think it's the right number. With a $500,000 reduction, it will bring the general administration costs down to about 6% of the total budget, which is the state average. So I think it's the right number. I don't think the board should be identifying specific positions. I think that's something for the superintendent to work out with staff.
Thanks. Jacob?
Yeah, I was going to wait till later, but I guess now I will say something. It looks to me that a large chunk of this cut is coming from the Special Ed Department. I know that the Behavior Specialist does work with other students throughout the whole school district. And speaking to some people, I've heard that other districts that tried to have the Special Ed Director combined with another position, it didn't work well. So I'm looking forward to hearing what everyone has to say tonight, but I would like to see this look a little bit different. And the 500,000 is a good number, but I think that can go higher as well.
Thanks. Okay, so I have a few comments to make. I want to endorse what Charlie and Kim said. I think that it is the superintendent's job to structure the district office, it's the board's job to hold her responsible if the district doesn't run well, but it's not our job to micromanage her and tell her how to run the district. I do think we should give her a target. I think Charlie's point that this will end up being a total of over a million dollars cut from the district office over the last couple of years is a very valid one. I'd like to go a little bit beyond what other people have said at this point, and I know that the superintendent brought back the recommendation that the board asked for last time. However, I find myself unable to... However, I find myself unable to go along with this in that the Board passed a resolution to make two-and-a-half-million dollars in cuts now, not at third interim. I have always in my life tried to keep my word, and I gave my word that we would make this cut. I think that even though we can't now commit to cuts that involve negotiation, that by third interim possibly that could be done, so that the actual cuts that would be made in the initial budget reduction plan would not necessarily be the final cuts, but at least everyone would get a look at what that level of cutting would really look like. So just speaking for myself, I think that the target that the superintendent that staff should be given to come back with at the first interim next month should be a two-and-a-half-million-dollar cut. As painful as that will appear on paper, hopefully we won't ever have to make some of those cuts because we'll either find more income or we'll find through negotiations some way to make cuts that don't impact the classroom as deeply. I'd also like to point out that we can hope that with a new governor and new legislature that more money will be coming to the schools. Just a little budget lesson that most of us have heard many times before, since Proposition thirteen, most of the money for schools has come from the state income tax. The state income tax is paid mostly by rich people. It's a progressive tax, and therefore the vast majority of it is paid by rich people, and most of the income for rich people is from capital gains, and that's tied to the stock market, and the stock market is in the process of crashing at the moment. So it's very possible that if the stock market doesn't rebound before the end of the year, there will be considerably less income tax collected by the state than was expected the last time the state did a budget. And over half of the state income, over half of state expenditures are education. So when the legislature is looking for something to cut, they cut education. So we might hope for more money coming from the state, but it's a very real possibility at this point that there will actually be further cuts. So it's not a pretty picture, and I can't say that I'm really sorry that I won't be on the Board to have to deal with it after tonight, but I do hope that the new Board can come up with solutions that, if they don't make everybody happy, at least minimize the pain. Any other comments from the Board? Kim?
Yes, I do see that the Board's resolution stated that we would develop, prioritize, and adopt expenditure reductions for nineteen-twenty sufficient to maintain a three-percent economic uncertainty reserve over a three-year period on or before the November thirteenth, two-thousand-and-eighteen Board Meeting. So we're already past that. We're already late. It has been a difficult process. The Budget Committee needs more time, wants more time. We've come this far. I wanted to ask our Chief Budget Officer, what will appear on the first interim budget is this year, right, so two-thousand-and-eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one?
Right.
And so the interim budget that gets turned in, we will still have over a three-percent reserve for, or do you include that additional year out?
So this year, eighteen-nineteen will be eleven percent, and next two years, nineteen-twenty will be seven percent, twenty-twenty-one will be one percent. So we are not going to meet at that third year, then we will have to be in qualified position when we turn the budget in for the second and first interim in December.
I just wanted to make that clear for everyone. So if we don't have two-point-five-million in cuts in the first interim, we would be accepting a qualified certification.
That is correct.
Not a positive certification for first interim. If we did further work on the budget, we would have the second interim, and then the county, if we succeeded in putting all of these cuts together before we adopted our budget in June, then we might be able to have a positive certification in June. But what do you think is going to be the county's response to having a first interim and possibly a second interim that would be in qualified status?
So the first interim, I know we cannot really make it, but the second interim is really critical for us because if we are going to send out letters to our staff, then that has to be done before March. And also, second interim is due on March fifteenth. And if we get qualified for the second interim, then we will have to do a third interim report, which is not usually common, and I don't think Albany has done that before. We only have to do a third interim report only because we were qualified in the second interim.
Okay, I'd also like to point out that the county let us do this because they trust us, because in the past, when we've passed resolutions, we stood by what we've done. I think if we come back without having made the two-and-a-half-million dollars in cuts this time, our nice friendly relationship with the county office will be over, and they'll be looking over our shoulders and not trusting us beyond. So that's just my personal feeling.
So we're using some shorthand here. When we say two-and-a-half-million in cuts, we're really saying two-and-a-half-million-dollar reduction in the deficit for the current year.
Absolutely.
Or the next budget year. So as various people have pointed out, if we had more revenues, we'd have to have fewer cuts, et cetera. One of the proposals on the table we've heard from various people are like increasing inter-district transfers, hence more student revenues, hence tighter classrooms, et cetera. But raising revenues would alleviate the need to make cuts, quite possibly. When we say two-and-a-half-million dollars in cuts, we mean if we've got a deficit of X, it needs to shrink by two-and-a-half-million, either because revenues are going up or expenses are going down.
Right, that's correct. And the other thing to remember is that this is two-and-a-half-million dollars is just to get the budget out for three years. But in order to actually stabilize the budget, there's a total of four-million dollars in revenue adjustments, in, you know, adjustments that would have to be made, hopefully not cuts. Hopefully, we'll have a parcel tax by then, maybe more students, other ways to get there, but the total is four-million dollars, not two-and-a-half. Jacob?
Yeah, just wanted to also make clear that it's not a one-time, two-and-a-half-million, it's ongoing. So I'm sure most people knew that, but just wanted to.
Good point, thank you.
I think I also want to add that if, we have to be really careful with the second interim timeline because if we're going to make two-and-a-half-million dollars in cuts and we are looking at reduction in personnel, we have not only a March fifteenth notice deadline, but prior to that, a resolution has to come to the Board, and usually that's in late February. So we're really shortening in terms of our timeline. The March fifteenth deadline is the latest deadline in terms of making any kind of personnel reductions. Non-personnel reductions doesn't have that timeline.
Right, thank you. Michaela?
Yeah, this doesn't completely relate to this conversation right here, but I did want to comment that I think a lot of students will support that the counselor position is being moved to Table Two, that the recommendation to cut that position is being moved to Table Two during the meeting that we had with students, as well as me and Audrey just talking to students in leadership, talking to students in our classes. That was a really big concern that a lot of them had, and so I just want to say for the students that we appreciate this being moved to Table Two.
Ross?
And again, to clarify, so when we're talking about Table One, Table Two, Table Three, this is a Budget Committee's report to the Board. It's not necessarily the superintendent's budget, which doesn't yet exist in any form the Board has seen. So when we talk about moving things from Category One to Category Two, or Table One to Table Two, et cetera, I don't know as the committee expected that their vehicle would become what it is. I will be off the Board very soon, but I would really like to see the administration present a budget and take as input everything we've got from this committee, but it's not the total of things. That committee did not look at many things, either because they were told not to look at specific things, or that they shouldn't or couldn't, or they just didn't come up with ideas that others of y'all will. That committee didn't talk about, I don't think, did it talk about increased inter-district transfers, didn't talk about selling off assets. Okay, if my neighbor says, "Well, what about the pool? You can sell that to the city." I think there will be various crazy and blue-sky thoughts out there, but there's a range of things that could be considered, and there is also, separate from that, a budget that needs to come forward. And we're going to dance around rearranging deck chairs on these tables where the most important thing is there will be a budget coming from the administration for the Board to approve, to request, to perhaps guide, but the Board's shot at this will be approval of a budget that comes from the administration.
Okay, so at this point, I think we should open it up to the public. I'm going to ask, as always, you try to keep your comments to three minutes or less because there are a lot of people who want to talk, and we want as many people as possible to have that opportunity. Also, if you agree with something someone before you had said, please just say I agree with them. You don't have to repeat what they said. And with that, we're going to open it up, and happy to hear from you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeremiah. If the stock markets crash, well, California's sure doing pretty good on the lottery. Don't we get a lot of money from the lottery for our school system?
We get some, we don't get a lot.
So basically, I graduated Albany High School in two thousand and one, and I was part of the Special Ed program. I had a class, one period per day, and I don't know how I would have graduated high school without that. And seeing cuts on the Special Ed Department, you know, as if they don't have it hard enough. You still want to pick on them in these political ways. Why don't we just, you know, suggest cutting money from the choir program, or wrestling, or chemistry? Why you got to attack Special Ed? I'm just kidding about taking money away from wrestling, you know, of course, and choir and acting and everything, but please consider, when I was in Special Ed class, we always had new teachers, and they provided fresh people with energy and gave young people a chance to interact, and seeing cuts on Special Ed is just going backwards. You know, if they don't have it hard enough, it's making you more difficult. So I don't know, if you're going to make cuts like that, you know, you might as well take that money from Special Ed, if you're going to do that, or the choir, or the wrestling team, or volleyball. Albany is all about schools, number-one schools. I graduated Albany High School with a three-point-seven-three overall GPA. My Special Ed class really helped me out. I would not have graduated high school without it. I have a very difficult time retaining what I read. So if you're going to make cuts and you're going to do all this, at least put some money toward crossing guards. At least, it looks like you have already, so thank you very much for that. So thank you.
Mr. Bar.
So in listening to all your comments, I had a question. At our last Board meeting, it might have been you, Paul, I'm not sure, one of you mentioned that if the mental health issue is so, is becoming very big now in our schools and it's so important, maybe we can go to the city for the funds. I hadn't heard that mentioned tonight, and maybe it wasn't you, but one of the Board members mentioned the possibility, was that you, Ross? Okay, that we could go to the city for those funds. And if that, in fact, is that really a legitimate, I'm just asking because we haven't had our meeting yet, and I really want to know if that's a possibility. Because could we then roll the money that we might save from that into keeping one of our positions?
We absolutely can ask. The numbers, I think, for things like the soda tax, I think, is two-hundred-thousand dollars, give or take. They have committed some of that to crossing guards. I don't know what is happening with the others.
I'm not worried about crossing guards.
But the city, in its wisdom, has chosen that to spend it on, and other things, and I don't know if it's public health, et cetera. If you make the case that student public health is a huge aspect of our city's, our population's concerns, that may budget the city on this, I don't know. But absolutely greater communication between the district and the city would be a fine thing.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to get that cleared up.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Williams. My name is Sarah Haller, and I'm the Special Education Resource Specialist at Marin. I've held this position since two thousand and thirteen. One of the key support specialists that I work with regularly in supporting my most challenging learners is the District Behavior Specialist, Eddie Pollard. Eddie is at Marin several times a week to provide on-the-spot support and coaching to our team and to work directly with students. At present, about twenty-five percent of the students on my caseload require behavioral support through their IEP. Eddie's support has been essential in, sorry, I lost my place there, in meeting our legal obligation to provide these students with a free and appropriate public education that addresses them holistically. His work has been key in also helping us to achieve our goal of being an inclusive and welcoming place for students across the spectrum. Currently, the behavior team, in case you aren't aware, consists of the behavior specialist and the behavior analyst, and together, while they're still stretched thin, they're able to provide much-needed support across all the sites by sharing the workload. The Committee's report to eliminate the Behavior Specialist position offered no plan on how this position's workload will be absorbed, and I'm concerned that without this position, the district may be faced with more requests for out-of-district or non-public placements for this population of students with severe behavioral and emotional disabilities, which will ultimately cost our district more than the salary of the Behavior Specialist. I strongly oppose this cut as it will severely impact our ability to support and include students with maladaptive behaviors that not only impacts their learning, but the learning of others, and it may impact our ability to fully implement their behavior plans, as is legally required. Additionally, I'm highly concerned about the district's plan to reorganize administrative roles and thereby eliminate the standalone position of Special Ed Director. As you may know, special education laws can be complex, and the parents of special education students can often be the strongest advocates for their children, and I see many of you in the audience tonight, so thank you for being here. I believe that without a seasoned and experienced leader in place who could carefully oversee the various programs across the district, ensure that we are meeting our obligations to our students, and provide leadership, not only to the program specialists, but to the department at large, that the district may become a magnet for further lawsuits and mediation. And again, these expenses will cost more than the salary of a new director. However, if the decision to restructure and increase the scope of the roles of the two other director positions is one that is ultimately agreed upon, I would urge you to request that the district publish the new job descriptions for those roles and embark on a thorough and extensive search for the most qualified applicants for those new positions. If we are going to have these responsibilities be absorbed by these other two roles, then I believe we have an obligation to our stakeholders to ensure that we have filled these positions with the most appropriately qualified and experienced leaders to take on these roles. Thank you for your time and consideration for these two very important changes to the entire special education community. Again, I urge you to ask the district to find other ways to cut costs that less severely impact our students with disabilities and the dedicated support staff that serves them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Ritten. I'm the current seventh-grade counselor. It's my fourth year at the middle school.
And I'm Brandon Bowhan. I'm currently the sixth-grade counselor at Albany Middle School. It's my seventh year there. The social landscape for middle school students has exponentially increased in -- The social landscape for middle school students has exponentially increased in difficulty in recent years, causing anxiety levels to spike and suicide prevention-related interventions to become a regular routine for our counselors in all grade levels. Anxiety and depression rates are increasing amongst American youth, and clinicians and research both suggested is going to continue. Early detection and intervention is critical. Social, emotional support and intervention is essential for middle school students' success, not only in academics, but in lifelong skill development.
The reduction of counselors in mental health support will be detrimental to AUST student population. With only two counselors at the middle school, each would have a caseload of around 450 students, rather than the still extremely high number that we currently have of 300. It will be impossible to meet the academic and mental health needs with a caseload this high, and we don't need to look further than turning on the TV or recent newspaper headlines to imagine what the consequences might be of that. Thank you for your time.
Patty Fugiarra, ATA co-president.
And Chris Knight is an active member of ATA who is here with us. And ATA wants you, the entire community, to know that everything we do as teachers is in service to our students. If you want to recruit and retain the highest-quality teachers to give the highest-quality instruction that we are accustomed to, your priorities in addressing the budget must include the following. And I appreciate everything, we appreciate everything that was said earlier by the speakers. Additional cuts at the district office, we believe that they can go deeper. And increased revenues. We have been asking this for about two years, asking you to reconsider the staffing of the district office, and we have seen increases since the year 2012, even when student enrollment has begun to decline. You've created new positions and promotions, creating a rather top-heavy organization. We know that the district office can run leaner, because it has been doing so in the past, even when there was higher enrollment than we have now. In addition, you must seriously consider increasing the revenues, and we appreciate what the board members have said earlier tonight, through the student enrollment, because we know we are able to provide excellent education to at least 100 students at the high school alone. That's worth about $1 million. So Chris Knight is here, again, as an active member of ATA, to present ATA's alternative recommendations, and he has a slide presentation for you. One other thing before we begin is I just want to make note that as of this afternoon, on the Albany Unified School website, the advertisement or the publishing of the meeting tonight was still stated as 7:00, not 6:30. So I mentioned this the last board meeting, and we would appreciate, you know, just checking the times and the locations for these meetings, because there was a lot of question, again, of whether or not we started at 6:30 or 7:00. It may seem insignificant, but we want people to have an opportunity to be prepared and be here, in all fairness to everybody, at a public meeting. And many people thought it was starting again at 7:00.
So I just want to address that. The last time I, we looked at it, Julie fixed it, I'm looking at it, it says in two places, 6:30. Board of Education meeting, 6:30 to 9:00, under Board of Education, November 27, and it says on the left-hand side, under Recent News and Upcoming Events, Board of Education meeting begins at 6:30 PM.
Okay. I don't know, it seems inconsistent, again, but we appreciate just having it out there and proper notice. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Chris Knight, trying to make this as quick as I can, Social Studies, Albany and McGregor High Schools. Really quick presentation. I know I should tighten on time. So, this is, this is the overview of the plan that was given at the last board meeting. So I'm not going to spend too much time on this, just because I think most people know it. We need to cut $2.5 million, as Paul Black said, to meet our minimum reserve requirement. 1.3 million cuts has now been reduced to, I think, 800,000. We're going for 2.5 million, so there's a significant gap. Most people are aware of that. All right. So I'm just going to jump ahead. All right. So here's essentially the plan for the 1.3 million. Again, this has been downgraded, and this is actually not entirely accurate, because, as Val said earlier, the Director III to Assistant Superintendent, that's no longer a pay raise, that's just going to be not a pay raise. So this number won't be, the costs, the savings will be slightly higher. But this is the proposed plan that we've received. This is the DO chart. This is a graphic organizer. By the way, this is all up on ATA's website, ATA dot hyphen AUSD. Anyways, we'll go later. This is a proposed reorganization, combined Director of Sped, Director of Student Services, elevate that position from Director I to Director III, and then elevate DCIA from Director III to Assistant Superintendent, cut a few other positions, you get about half a million dollars in cuts. Okay. So basically, our plan is attempting to keep cuts away from students as high up as possible. So the plan has $2.7 million in closing the deficit, and it's based off three facts. One is that DO size has increased in recent years despite declining student enrollment. DO staffing has increased. The second is that the district gets $10,000 for each additional interdistrict transfer student. And the third is the materials and supplies budget last year was 1.3 million, which is significant. Okay. So here's our basic plan. Cut two Director III positions, those are each about $200,000. Reduce two secretarial positions in the DO, that's about $160,000, so that's about $600,000. Reduce the pay of the new Food Services Director, whose pay appears to be about $20,000 over-market rate, based on Transparent California data. 100 new students at Albany High School, these can fit. I'll show you the data if I have time. 30 new students at Cornell and Marin, we're not as sure about that, but that would be great for our budget. Summer DO furlough for five days is about $30,000. $500,000 cut in materials and supplies. No new textbooks. Add it all up, it's 2.7 million. So I know I'm way over. Just really quickly, there's 867 empty seats at the high school, spread out relatively even over courses and periods. You divide that by 6.4 courses per student on average, that the average student takes, you get 137 new students we could fit. That doesn't work out perfectly, because the courses are concentrated in some electives, which not every student would take. To be conservative, you make it 100. So we can fit 100 new students at the high school with existing staffing levels, that's $1 million more dollars for interdistrict transfer students that would love to come to Albany. This is just a graphic of the DO budget filled out for secretarial and support staffing positions. So it's about, as someone said earlier, 3.4 million. So there's a lot of potential rearrangement that could occur, a lot of shifting responsibilities, and that's a graphic. Again, this is all on ATA's website. So thank you very much.
We have a couple of comments up here.
So Ryan, if I could just take a minute, I'd love to just comment. Thank you so much for bringing some creative ideas. I appreciate that. And I just want to offer a couple of questions and comments. Let's see, where to start? The, the fire marshal is here, that's where to start. So personally, I'm happy for Albany schools to serve more students. There's nothing standing in the way of admitting more transfers. Board policy is to admit transfer students if there is space available at grade level. And the determination of whether there's space available at grade level is done by the principal working with district staff. So there's nothing standing in the way of admitting more transfer students if it works. And you've done, you've done the math, but I think probably a conversation with the high school principal might be in order here. The master schedule is tough. I mean, it, it's very hard. Mathematically, it does seem like it works, but when it turns out that kids can't get the elective courses that they're requesting, that's a problem. So 15 years ago, we went through this. This is just my cautionary note for everyone. We went through this 15 years ago. We threw the doors wide open without adding staffing to Albany High. And what happened was that students were not able to get their course requests, because it just didn't work within the master schedule. And about 150 students a year wound up being assigned a service period in lieu of an elective course, because it just, they just couldn't make the schedule work. So we wound up with a state-imposed penalty. It's, it's not a good route to go, you just need to do this carefully. I think there's potential, and I really appreciate the possibility of bringing in more students, but we really don't want to do the penalty minutes again. It just, it was not, not a good thing. One thing in the calculation, I think probably you need to know that there are donated funds that are paying for elective sections at Albany High. And so those have been donated to provide flexibility in the master schedule. So basically, you're, say your count of 867 open seats probably should be revised downward to reflect the fact that we've got at least three sections running on donated money. Basically, the district needs to be able to meet its obligations without counting on donated money to cover the course requests. So it's not to say that you don't have potential there, it just might be 777 instead of 867 seats. Good luck with it.
Thanks. One very minor adjustment, the Food Service Director's salary does not come out of the general fund, that's paid for by a separate fund, cafeteria fund, so it really doesn't affect the budget, but that's a very minor adjustment. I think we have both students and Kim want to speak. So, Kim, and then...
Yeah, I also think that it's a, our doors are open for some transfer students. I think that right now, on our waiting list are less than 20. Trying, you know, saying that we're going to accept 100 more students when we have less than 20 on our list is, is a big reach. I mean, I guess somehow, I'm not sure how you would get the word out that we were opening the doors again, but for the, I mean, I'm sure that, I'm sure that people would, would come and start applying, but this might be a process that, that might take a while. And I also know that the, I think that a dozen of the students that are, that are on our waiting list, and that we did not let in this year, were a request for freshmen. And I believe that our freshman class is extremely large. I think we're running 319, at least it was that at the beginning of the year, and it was, it was caused quite a bit of consternation trying to figure out how we were going to fit all of the general ed classes that those approximately 320 students needed. So I think that, you know, so we couldn't, we couldn't let in those extra dozen students because we simply did not have room in that class. We may have more room in the entering freshman class for next year. I'm not sure how many, you know, how many applications we can generate for that. I also think that just doing this calculation based on maxing every teacher to 150 student contacts, and then calculating your empty seats, is, is not, is not the right math. You know, I mean, you may have a section of AP Mandarin, but I don't think that you're going to fill that. So I think that what you need to look at is a more sort of real-life view of what the students want to take. I also, I also think that this process, you know, it needs to be spread over grade levels. And I do think, I would like to see us consider, I said I think there were less than 20 applications, but I think there were a few applications for sophomores and juniors, and, you know, I think we would need to revise a board policy to allow mid-year enrollment. And just as a gesture, you know, I think that maybe we should consider that as a board, so that we could send out a few invitations. People's lives change when your, your school's already started. Maybe we could send out some invitations, and maybe none of them would be accepted, but we could certainly give that a try.
Thanks, Michaela.
I'm, I'm looking at a slide, if you could go down, I think it's, it's the 10th slide. So I'm looking at the very end of the slide, the 500K cut in materials and the no new textbooks, and I remember specifically at the meeting that me and Audrey had hosted, where we gathered student input about what students preferred in these cuts, they multiple times, they said multiple times that they would prefer cuts in materials and textbooks over cuts in things like teacher benefits, or the actual person-to-person interactions. And so I just wanted to commend and point out that that specific part of the table is something that many students fully support and are enthusiastic about over the other cuts that were proposed by the Budget Advisory Committee, and some of the other cuts that have been talked about.
Thanks. Audrey?
Yeah, I wanted to thank the ATA for putting together such a comprehensive presentation. It's definitely more on par with what we've heard from the students, specifically to the 100 new students at AHS, and potentially 30 more students at the elementary schools. I don't know if this is, I'm sure there isn't a number now, but is there a possibility that we can get a specific number for how much demand there is?
Give me just a minute.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if this number can come up today, but at some point, if we could have a better idea.
Well, we, we have it for the high school. There's a waiting list of 12 for the freshman class, I think zero, zero for the sophomore class, or maybe one for the sophomore class, zero for the junior class.
Four, I think, for the, yeah, there's four, I think, for the senior class.
No, it was one for the senior class.
One for senior, and the four from the junior class.
If this would, if AUST advertised that there would, could be more students, a lot, like to 100, probably? Okay.
A lot of people would like to get into AUST.
Can I, sorry, Kim, can I respond earlier to your appointment? So about the, I think the math works out on the 100 new students, based on looking over, you know, looking over the course schedule per period. I try to take into account the fact that there's electives that students won't necessarily want to take that have more open seats, but that said, I welcome someone else to look over the math and give us an alternate number on how many students would fit at the high school. I think the numbers work, but I welcome anyone else to look at the number.
Well, I mean, did you consider the fact that for your junior and senior classes, that there's prerequisites? And so a lot of, you know, who knows if these, if you don't have the prerequisites, you're not going to get into that class. And so that, I mean, it's a difficult scheduling situation, and I think that if it was something that, that, you know, we brought kids into gradually, I think it would work better than... If, also, if you let in 100 students, I think that everybody knows that you're going to have to increase staffing. You know, even though you're saying that you might not need to increase the number of certificated teachers, you're going to have to increase para, your special education paraeducators for one, because we know that our district runs about 10% special ed. You're going to have to bring in at least another half counselor, I would say. There's just, there's associated costs that are not taken into consideration in this proposal. I mean, it's a good, you know, it's interesting and creative, and we're glad to have it. But when, you know, the devil is in the details in terms of what you actually can save.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there is a way to consider specific classes, because I know as a student at Albany High, there are certain classes I'm in, such as a math class, where we work in groups, and you're not receiving so much... we work in groups, and you're not receiving so much of, like, you don't really need that one-to-one time in a math class. And if you do, then you can go to this like math hour. It's like a tutoring hour that they have after school. So I'm wondering if there is a way to kind of find what you're talking about as the devil in the details and really figure what that would be, taking into account certain classes and how much one-to-one attention you need from a teacher in those classes, comparing things like, you know, math class where you're working in groups most of the time with our new curriculum, and you don't need so much time one-to-one with a teacher. But something like an English class where they're grading multiple essays and you really do need to have that interface with a teacher because you're having really deep conversations, then that maybe could be more limited in how many more students are taken into classes like that. I mean, I'm just wondering if there is a way to calculate it, taking into account specific classes and the needs for those classes.
One more thing, just, so one thing else to consider here is if we had like an equal number, so the freshman class is quite large, if we created equal size, so if the next year sophomore class was quite large and we targeted, say, 315 students per grade level, it would make the scheduling job easier at the high school because they would have the same number of students in each level. And one more thing to consider here is that most Albany teachers out of practice don't have a, they don't teach first, they don't teach both first and seventh period. So the administration tries not to give someone a first and a seventh. So if you were to remove that restriction, that would create additional flexibility as well. And I'm sure that some teachers would be willing to be a little bit more flexible with their schedules if it meant keeping staffing levels where it is. That's just one more thing to consider.
Thanks. Great presentation. Thank you for that. I think certainly when we... You know, to get to the two and a half million, certainly some of that can be income. And I think the county would accept, even if it's somewhat speculative in the first interim, if it said, "Increase enrollment and put some dollar amount next to that." So that could certainly go into the first interim budget and would help me, anyway, because it would be fewer cuts and still get us to that two and a half million. So thank you for that.
Good evening, President and Board. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. I'm a parent of an eighth grader at Albany Middle School. I would also encourage you, actually, I wasn't going to speak on this item, but I heard a couple of things. One of them definitely needs clarification. I would encourage you not to cut special ed. My child has been a special ed student, and he has significantly grown because of the staff that he's worked with since sixth grade. The sixth grade, we were kind of at our wits' end. Seventh grade got much better, and this year has been absolutely amazing. And a lot of that credit goes to Mr. Ritchie, who's really worked with him. So any way we could look at limiting the impact of special ed, who are obviously some of the kids that are impacted the most in the learning environment, would be helpful. The other issue that came up was the issue of soda tax, crossing guards, things like that. I think it's really, really important for the public to understand the difference between the school board with its own budget, its own board, and the city of Albany with its own budget, its own board. The city of Albany is not here to serve the school board, much like the school board is not here to serve the city of Albany. It's two separate entities. Soda tax was put on by the city of Albany. So the city of Albany does not come to the school board and ask them for money from parcel taxes to fund projects through the city of Albany. While I don't care about crossing guards, it was a significant enough issue as this board, and the city knows that the city is paying, not the school board, the city is paying for all the services out of the soda tax, in addition to the other item, which is bottle fillers throughout city projects. So I think it's important that people understand that while, it's not important to me and it's not important to some people, it is important to those residents who vote on those parcel taxes that there are crossing guards. You know, one need to look at some situations that have come up and that I think are going to come up, and we'll discuss that at the next issue. But I think that mental health is an important thing, but I don't think you can look to the city to fund projects through the school board. Thank you.
Neri Castillo McIntyre. I'm the father of India McIntyre, a current student in the special education program at Ocean View in first grade. And I'm also the parent of a future Albany school. He eventually will be in kindergarten. His name is Ulysses McIntyre. So obviously, the budget will affect him as much as it might affect my daughter right now. Before I continue, I just want to take a moment to, I was planning on doing this beforehand, but you started the meeting earlier, so couldn't get here on time. I wanted to thank the outgoing members of the school board. I think that even though, as I mentioned before in a private conversation, even though we might disagree in some of the issues, thus far, my experience with all of you has been that all of you care, and that's enough for me so that when you make your decisions, I can get fully behind them, even if I don't like them. The second thing, I also wasn't going to talk about the budget, but when I realized that there are significant cuts considered for special education, I just want to repeat myself. I agree with everything that other folks have said about the special education program. And I do want to emphasize again that it's important for the school district not to be penny-wise and pound-foolish, because even though you might save some money upfront right now by cutting the budget for special education, you will pay back at a higher amount when parents litigate, because the IDEA requires a free, appropriate public education without considerations for budgets. So yes, the budget is a reality, but if the students, the special education students' needs are not being met, they're not getting a free, appropriate public education, parents will litigate. And as the dean of the law school at UC Berkeley would say when he was giving an example, when an issue came up, he said, "I could litigate. I would litigate." And the same is true of a lot of the parents here in the district. I am an attorney by license, and my wife is currently the assistant chief therapist for California Children's Services in Alameda County. And one of her roles is being the cell liaison for the school districts in North County, which means there are plenty of resources, some of which you are familiar with, Eileen Crum and Dave Glasser, who used to be a member of this board, who would come together to litigate when necessary. So again, please consider not cutting that budget. Thank you.
My name is Julie Busking, and I am a reading intervention teacher at Marin Elementary School. And this is my 21st year in the district, so I've seen it through a lot. And I will reiterate sort of that historical perspective of the district office has been leaner in the past and has functioned. So I think that that's really a serious option to consider. And I would also like to really reiterate the importance of not cutting the behaviorist position. And usually, we talk about it in terms of position, but I think in this instance, it's really the person is super significant, because Eddie is probably the best bargain that this district has right now. He has, seriously, if you look at his training and his skill and what he provides us, we are paying him less than what his market value is. And the services that he's providing us are cost-saving services. The training that he provides to our staff so that we can be in compliance and not have the, you know, it's the sort of de-escalation training and how to safely handle hands-on kids. That's a huge, important thing, and we can't not have it. So if we don't have him, we would be contracting out for it, which would be costing us a lot of money. And if we were, you know, the work that he's doing is, it's not removed from students. It's direct hands-on with students, it's direct hands-on with teachers, and it is for our most significantly needy population, who we are legally mandated to be serving through their IEPs. So that's a really dangerous place to be cutting. And so I just, you know, it might cost less in the short term, like, oh, pull that out of the budget. But if you think about, those services still need to be performed, and what it would cost us to have them performed, any other way of doing it would probably cost us significantly more. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Hi, I'm Jeff Castle. I'm the technology department chair at the high school, and it's my 17th year at the district as a full-time teacher. It sounds like the tone's changing a little bit, but with respect to the district's reticence to increase enrollment at the high school specifically, but I know it could be considered at other sites. You know, the high school is in the process of building a $9 million addition, so they're going to be adding seven full-size classrooms. And I feel really fortunate, and I know my colleagues do and the students do, to live in a community that keeps passing parcel taxes to support our schools. And I know a lot of that parcel tax money is going to fund these capital improvement projects. I, is...
That's bond money.
Bond money.
Okay, so...
Bond money goes to capital improvement, and parcel tax money goes to continuing expenses like salaries.
So is any of the parcel tax money being used to pay for things that are going into the new building?
No.
No, it's being outfitted by Measure E. E can both outfit and build, and Bond B can simply build. I mean, there may be some things, you know, like a box of markers or something that come out of the general fund, but in general, the outfitting is being done purely through bond.
So if those, okay, so then I would ask the board a question. If those classrooms go underutilized, should the community feel any sort of animosity towards the district or the board that it didn't consider more, didn't consider increasing revenue, if possible, by increasing enrollment at the high school? In other words, if the community looks at that new building and says, "It seems underutilized." Now, I realize that some of the seats that are being added is to create flexibility so that teachers don't have to share classrooms. But if we didn't do anything to increase enrollment, would it seem like an extravagance, I guess, on some level? And I guess that's a question for the board. I mean, right, this building is going to exist in two years, and I haven't heard the district say, "We are looking for ways, actively looking for ways to increase revenue by increasing enrollment." What I have heard you say is, "Well, if we accept too many inter-district transfers, then we would have to hire another teacher." Well, to me, giving more kids a chance for a quality public education and hiring someone to be a teacher seems kind of like a win-win, as long as that interaction, as long as that is revenue positive.
Russ?
So there's a huge elephant waiting to walk into the room in an hour, in an hour, about what's going to happen with the high school annex being filled with elementary school kids because of school construction. That all will get talked about in an hour, but at this point, we're not proposing to put a whole bunch of new classrooms and not have them filled with bodies.
Correct. But what I'm saying is even four or five years down the line, when that building exists, we're going to have seats for, we're going to have seven new full-size classrooms. But if we don't increase enrollment, we'll basically just have a bunch of extra space that we don't have right now.
Yeah, the board, district, what do I want to say? Board policy does state that we will admit inter-district transfers when we have the capacity. So if those buildings are underutilized, the high school has extra capacity. It is board policy that we will admit more students.
But there's a bit of a disconnect. I mean, I heard the crowd's reaction, the audience's reaction, when we said, "Well, we're not even sure if people would want to come to Albany Schools if we gave them a chance." And I just, I don't understand that.
No, I think it's, we know they would. The question is, trying to get students in right now, in the middle of the year, that's a very quick turnaround. People have their kids already in other schools, may not want to make that move. We don't know if that can happen that quickly, but we're pretty sure that we can fill all those spaces, you know, next year or the year after, if it's known in the area that Albany is accepting transfers.
I think that that last point you just said is key, though. I mean, with all due respect, Kim said, "Well, there's only 20 people on the waiting list right now." But I think it's probably wide-known in the community that we are not accepting inter-district transfers. And so, of course, there's only 20 people on the waiting list.
No, you're right. And in fact, according to board policy, we can't accept students in the middle of the year, but that could be changed. The new board could vote on that, you know, in December and change that policy. Charlie?
So I appreciate those observations. Just your comment about, should the community feel any animosity toward the board? No, the community should never feel any animosity toward the board. But I wanted to observe that between 2002 and 2004, when Albany made it known that they would suddenly start admitting inter-district transfer students, enrollment at Albany High went from 900 to 1,300 students. It was fast, it was hard, it was difficult. And then we slammed the door shut after that, and that was even harder. So it's destabilizing to ramp up too quickly, it's destabilizing to slam the door shut. You don't want to do either one. You want to just make it known that there is increasing capacity, there's a willingness to accept inter-district transfer students. Hey, you know, look at school districts statewide. Increasing enrollment always pays. Decreasing enrollment is always a problem. So, yeah, there should be an increase in enrollment to match the increasing capacity. It's a great thing. We just have to do it kind of in a, sort of a ramped-up fashion.
So I wanted to add on to that. I think that we can learn from history, and if we advertise, be much more strategic in our advertising. So if we know we have, I'm making this up, X number of openings, we could advertise and say, "We have this many openings in these grade levels for this year." We did do some of that this year to open up, so we had a little bit more at the high school. We had a few more at the elementary school. The middle school is absolutely impacted. We don't have room at the middle school. So I think we can be strategic in how we advertise for what we have for openings. And I agree. I think the word would get out very quickly.
Well, even now, I mean, so I manage the public contact form on the high school website, so just at the high school, and I get requests all the time. I'd say weekly, without exaggerating. And so, you know, that's a lot. And those are just people that dug around and found the contact form on the website. So my last, and then just one quick question. So at the end of the last meeting, we kind of, it seemed like we were, the board was planning on talking about more than just Table 1, but then Table 1 took up the whole time. I think a lot of us showed up tonight hoping that we were going to hear about Table 2. And I was surprised that the floor was open to public comment before the board had even made any general discussion amongst yourselves about Table 2, because last meeting, you had talked about some general thoughts about Table 1 and then opened it up. So right now, I feel like all the people here don't even necessarily know what's coming later. Are you going to start talking about Table 2 at 10 o'clock once a bunch of people have left or ready to go? So I'm just curious what the plan is regarding Table 2 for this evening. Thanks.
I think the answer is, we're hoping not to talk about the specific cuts, just the target amount. And then unfortunately, when the budget comes next month, if the board wants to start arguing at that point and changing specific cuts, that would be the time they would have to do that. Because it's really the superintendent, the staff, that works out how to make the cuts, the board. It's really reaching beyond what the board's role is to specify exactly which positions are cut. We can make recommendations, we can ask the superintendent to protect certain services, but beyond that, we shouldn't be going down the table and say, "Yes on this, no on that."
The board does actually...
The board does actually have a role, but that role comes in February and March when staff will bring position layoff notices to the board for approval. So tonight, we're really not at that level. We're not talking about any specific positions, even though the superintendent has provided some guidance on what her thinking is. It's really anticipatory. It's, this is the direction the superintendent is intending to go. I think tonight, for us, really the only question is whether or not we approve the dollar amounts and recommend putting those dollar amounts into the first interim budget. At least, that's the way I'm thinking of it. I'm not really thinking that we are voting on any specific reductions because there's no specific layoff notices involved. That will happen later.
Hi, my name is Cara Whitallis. I have a third grader at Marin and a student going into kindergarten at Marin. And frankly, I was not anticipating the budget conversation at all. I'm here for the Marin Elementary School influx of students for kindergarten, so I was super surprised. It was like, everyone is concerned about this. But, so I'm really digesting this information as it comes, so forgive me if I'm reiterating something. I want to extend an appreciation for the difficulty in closing a huge gap like this. It's never fun, it's clearly emotional. And I would like, if it hasn't already been done, to suggest, humbly suggest, that in these next months, that some time perhaps be taken in just thinking through more lofty about, you know, what we care about as a community and sort of putting some weight to those things. You know, a word might be mental health. How do we care about it and what level of care do we have against it? A word might be access, a word might be extracurricular services, and a word might be, you know, sort of broad dimensions and put a weight to it, so that when you're evaluating these cuts next to one another, you have some objective predetermined weight to make these decisions and the emotion is sort of drawn away from it. I think after these cuts are made, there's going to be an explanation as to why one thing wasn't against the other. And it is helpful to have objective criteria by which you're making these decisions well in advance of actually having to make them. And again, the reason why I was even inspired to come up here was this discussion around mental health. And you had mentioned, you know, the extracurricular around Mandarin, learning Mandarin. And I thought to myself, you know, the amount of lives that are touched by the mental health services is so significant, and it's the largest public health concern that we have among our young people right now. How on earth could we be stacking that up against extracurricular services that, you know, I love Mandarin and I love all that stuff, but it's not, you know, again, it's, if the criteria are established upfront and we think about what we really care about, those decisions might become a whole lot easier. That's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Jessica Cross. A lot of you know me. I'm a fifth-grade parent and an eighth-grade parent, and I also was a member of the Budget Committee. And I wanted to say, I love the idea of people thinking about revenue. We all did. It's in our report. It just wasn't in our charge. If you look at the language of our, when our committee was formed, we were explicitly formed to consider cuts. And so I just wanted to say that, like, where I think most people would like ideas about revenue. And if transfer could be used, and I really just don't have the knowledge to assess whether it could, to fill some of that, that would be great. I also just wanted to say, just having served on it, the thing that was, that came across most strongly to me was how none of it is good. None of these are good. There's not really an option that's great. We want to have, put our kids first. We also kind of, our kids need a functioning administration as well. We need great teachers. We want to attract great teachers. These things are not separate, and so that's what makes it so hard. And anything that we want to say, "Well, you can't touch electives, you can't touch special ed, you can't touch..." All of them have a cost somewhere else, and it's really difficult. And I guess all I wanted to say on this tonight, and, you know, this isn't probably new to people, but I just wanted to ask all of us adults in the room to think about what we can do, and just not only where else things can change, but like from the parents, can we go deeper for another parcel tax? Do we care, you know, where's our balance? Are we giving all we can to school care? Are we doing really all we can if we want these things kept? And I say that for all the stakeholders, to really look at ourselves as well as everybody else in this. And because I could think we all here care about keeping these things for the kids, whether it's electives. And the electives or the special ed, they're intertwined, too. It's not like special ed kids don't take electives or maybe don't only love school because of them. That, these things cross, they're interconnected. So I just want us to all think about, you know, what we can bring to it and kind of have that spirit of remembering that we're really all here focused on the kids. And all of it's bad. I mean, there's not a happy outcome here unless we magically get a new budget from the governor. But, and we could help the superintendent in advocating for those changes. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I just get a quick show of hands at how many people are waiting to speak? Okay, we've got about three more, which is great. So let's take three more speakers. Then the board has to discuss this, and there are a lot of people here waiting to talk about the other item on the agenda.
Hi, my name is Colette Colodney, and I'm an eighth grader at AMS. So I just wanted to point out and emphasize again that electives are extremely important to protect. I take French and choir, and both have had so many benefits for me in my school career. Learning a foreign language opened my eyes to new cultures, and I'm so excited to continue. But choir is a way for me to connect with all different kinds of students, not to mention how much I've grown musically. I sincerely hope that I will be able to continue this at the high school without sacrificing challenging academics. As an eighth grader, I'm thinking about my transition to the high school, but also my fifth-grade brother has moved to the middle school. He is looking forward both to playing the trumpet in band and taking a language. Knowing how important these both are to me, it would break my heart if he didn't have the opportunities I had. For his sake and for mine, I hope that you'll remember how important electives are when you make these hard decisions. Thank you.
Hello, board. Karen Bonaney, special ed teacher at Cornell and the Middle School. And this is my buddy and my colleague, Eddie Pollard, who happens to be out here. I will not take a full three minutes because I fully support what Sarah Haller, my colleague from Marin, said earlier. I did have a question, though. On the table, was Eddie classified? Was he admin? Or how was Eddie classified? Because I know he's not admin. Eddie had not administration.
He is under, it's called a classification, nonrepresented.
What does that mean?
It means he's not part of the bargaining unit, but he also does not hold an administrative credential.
Correct. And I think that was probably the thing, is that it feels to me that some of these cuts that are happening were targeted toward non-union members, and Eddie is a non-union member. When, you know, emails have been going around, trying to really raise the issue of Eddie being, you know, jobs on the block here. Eddie's been instrumental in the job that I do. I couldn't do my job without Eddie, just as I couldn't do it without Julie. But not having both of them would really, really be detrimental. And I emailed my colleagues at the middle school, my colleagues at Cornell, and within an hour, I said, all I said was, "Send me one word that describes Eddie." Within an hour, I got, "Practical, calm, helpful, patient, compassionate, punctual, professional, willing, effective, imperative, indispensable, conscientious, experienced, competent, big-picture thinker, adds value, courteous, problem solver, knowledgeable, needed, cheerful, dedicated, knowledgeable," that might be twice, "thoughtful, tenacious, supportive, team player, positive, considerate, dependable, loyal, kind, and above all, student-centered." We can't lose Eddie, and I'm here to advocate for that.
Good evening. I'm Patty Fugiora, co-president of ATA. One of the things I wanted to mention is, I have been a teacher here in Albany for 19 years. I was, I've been at Albany High School for 18 years, the new high school. I've been in the same classroom the whole time. Students can't believe it when I tell them that. But I was there when the enrollment went from 900 to 1,300. And I can tell you, it was very difficult at that time because we didn't have the classroom space really to accommodate that many students. The high school was built for 900. Since that time, though, we have built four new classrooms. We have split some of the classrooms. And our enrollment now is not 1,300 anymore, it's about 11,50, all right? So I see that, I don't see it as a problem, bringing in 100 new students. I don't see it as something that's going to cause a lot of overcrowding at the high school, because we have more classroom space now than we did when we were at 1,300. I was also there when we had to make up those penalty minutes, and it was kind of painful. What happened at that time was, the ninth-grade class, they were told they could only take six classes, even though we had a seven-period day. And because of that, we were penalized by the state. And we all had to make up penalty minutes for a couple of years because of that. We had to work longer to make up that time. So I don't really see that same situation that, where we had 1,300 back in 2004. We're a different school now, and we're less students, we have more classroom space there. And I think we can definitely accommodate 100 more students there. Thank you.
Thank you for all those comments. Just like to point out, the state in its wisdom applied those penalty minutes after the students who had missed that extra time were out of the school. So the students, my son among them, had extra minutes in the day as penalty for the kids who were already gone, not having had enough instruction. Anyway, so the board now, this is an action item. We need to decide what instruction we're giving to staff. Who wants to start? Charlie?
Somebody has to. So my sense is that the instruction that we're giving to staff is to include the dollar amounts that are listed here as reductions in the first interim budget. The actual details remain to be worked out later.
Okay.
Clarifying, just, my understanding was not just the dollar amounts, but that the Administration Central Office, from $481,000 to $500,000, is that correct?
If you want to round it up, that's fine, yeah.
I think that was a recommend, that was a comment made by a board member.
Yeah. Kim suggested round numbers.
I suggested higher, so. I mean, on a side note, I have a problem with supposing, we were supposed to cut last year, we didn't cut. Now we're supposed to cut 2.5. This is nowhere near close. After all this time that has elapsed, we're going to possibly pass something that's not going to get us a positive certification. I just am having a hard time trying to come into grips with not a sufficient amount of cuts. Nobody wants to cut, but we've been kicking it down the road for years. And this isn't even halfway there. I mean, it's, what, a third? I mean, it's not all right.
Jacob, I don't always agree with you, but I agree with you completely on this one.
So, you know, if you wanted to put in a range, I'd be fine with that. You know, the ATA proposal actually was, I think, a total of about $600,000 for district office. Staff proposal is, it's not quite the same because of the positions, but the dollar amount is close. $500,000 in one, $600,000 in the other. Realistically, I mean, our entire spending on general administration is $3.4 million. I don't see us cutting $2 million out of a $3.4 million. That includes all the principals, too. So, you know, I just don't know how much more is realistic to require from the district office. But, you know, if you want to nudge it up a little bit more and ask that that be considered, I'd be good with that.
Okay.
I think there needs to be some flexibility in the direction that we give to staff. I think that we don't have to, you know, our number, we can give some guidance on where that could be, but I think that there also should be a little bit of flexibility in how that goal number is reached. I noticed on the ATA plan, they have a reduction of half a million dollars in materials and supplies. That hasn't been talked about much. I think that that's an area that perhaps we can cut more than what we had originally planned, you know, and that has the benefit of being a, not a negotiated item. We talked about, we can include a higher number for our students. We can increase the number somewhat and increase revenue that way. So I think there's a variety of actions that we can take here. Now, I think what you were talking about is an absolute number that we want to see, whether we want to, Paul, I know that you want to see 2.5 million cut.
No, not cut, 2.5 million adjustment. If some of that's revenue, that's great.
Adjustment, okay, sorry, yeah. You know, in, going in on our first interim budget next month.
That's what we promised the county.
That's what we promised the county. I'd like to hear other board members speak to that issue. Is that the direction that we're going to give to staff, that we want this interim budget to include 2.5 million in either reductions or, yeah, reductions?
Reductions and revenue.
And revenues.
Sure. And it can be wrong. It could been, it can absolutely say, "We want to remove this position and this position." And by a month later, you've learned woefully why, no, that position really is critical, we'll have to cut somewhere else. So, yeah, I'd be uncomfortable saying anything tonight other than, yes, here's the target of 2.5 million, we have promised the county we got to get to. And all of the discussion tonight is grist for that mill that will come out as a proposal from the administration. It's not the board's proposal. It's not the Budget Committee's proposal. It is the administration's proposal. The big points I took tonight were, cuts in the district office certainly seem credible in a range. Adding revenue in the form of inter-district transfer seems to be, everybody's general consensus is a reasonable approach. I think that could very well have some impact on our next discussion item, on construction. But I would absolutely throw out there a challenge to hit the 2.5 million, doing some of the big things we talked about here and adding some other stuff in, as anybody can suggest. I don't see why we're saying, "Oh, and we think in this specific area, picking 600,000 or 500,000 is a thing." It's not. We want in a month, 2.5 million. We want to meet the obligation we've made to the county in a month. I'll be off the board then, but I couldn't ask this future board and the administration to do anything less than aim for that target. And I don't care how it gets to that point, but it needs to get to that point.
Yeah, I would actually feel bad handing the new board something less than was promised.
So I need to ask staff, we got away with putting in kind of a black box 2.5 million for the adopted budget. We didn't identify anything. We just said, "We will hit 2.5 million." But for the first interim, will the county accept unspecified reductions? Or are they actually looking for us to give some evidence that there are real positions or real cuts that we will be considering?
Yes, I will have to provide the details to the county.
Okay. And so even if the details are not approved by the next board and something else is approved, the county will, I guess what I'm saying is that the details that you provide to the county... to the county are a starting point, that, that you don't necessarily need to follow through on those details if you can follow up with something different by the second interim, right?
We can make adjustments.
You can make adjustments.
But then however, I do need a board approved, so I can send it to the county after the board approves.
You'll need a board approval before the second interim, right?
For the first interim, yes, so that I can send it to the county.
Oh, okay.
And then second interim, yes, as well. But we can make the adjustment.
Yeah, I guess my concern about specifying 2.5 million for the first interim is, look how hard it was to get to 800,000. How are they gonna put in 2.5 million in the next three weeks into a budget? That's a problem.
Their problem, their job.
Because for me to present to the board for December 11th meeting, I will have to have all the packet by December 4th. That means it's a week from today. So...
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing that to get to 811,000 is a lot. Because that, that does not, doesn't touch anything that is considered bargainable. When you're cutting 2.5 million, it is going to impact staff and programs. I mean, let's, let's put it out there, it is going to impact staff and programs. That is what I could get to for 811. Short of decimating the central office, we're going to impact program. And that has to be built into the first interim. And that is going to mean that I'm going to have to look at the areas in Table 2, and maybe Table 3. We have to talk about, I mean, there are, there were suggestions that were made in the Budget Advisory Committee to consider furlough days. Furlough days is a bargainable item. So, you know, there are, there are things where you have to go to bargaining, and that belongs at the bargaining table. There are places where I can increase, excuse me, there are places where I can make budget reductions, but that is going to mean an increase potentially in class size. And I have to weigh that very carefully, because we're looking at sometimes our youngest learners.
Ultimately, the budget adjustment needs to be made, whether it's in this interim or the next interim or the final budget. Not doing the painful thing this time is not going to mean that it doesn't get done. To me, it's like, you know, if you need your leg amputated, you don't cut an inch deep today, and then an inch deep tomorrow, you just cut it off. So this is going to be painful. Hopefully, some of the pain can be ameliorated by finding other cuts to replace the cut, because there are bargainable things that could happen. There might be other sources of income that could happen, so that the final budget won't necessarily have the cuts that are in the first interim. But I think we just owe it to the county that we promised it to, and to the incoming board, and to the public, to see what it looks like when you make those kinds of cuts.
And I'd like to make a recommendation, because I, I'm not sure if this happened in the last round of budget cuts, and Charlie, you may have the history on this, but one thing I want us to be very mindful is, is that whatever is reduced, that we know the order in which it is restored. So should a, should we pass a partial tax, or should the governor give us more money? I want to make sure that we have very clearly what gets, what gets cut first, what gets cut throughout and last, and then the restoration, what gets restored first, and then what gets restored last. And I think that in addition to the first interim report that we can do, I would like to at least provide to the board some sort of memorializing the order in which cuts are made, and the order in which they are restored. Because I don't necessarily know if that was done in, back in 2008, '09.
It was, but that's a great idea. Jacob?
Yeah, there was a couple of things I'd like to talk about. The first one, I had mentioned it before, the combining the student services and the special ed under one person, I still think is going to be not wise. Also, I've heard a lot of support for the behavior specialist, and I also want to thank him personally for his long detailed email, that I'm sure the whole board read, and other emails of support for him, and a lot of people here speaking up for him tonight. I would like to ask if there's some way we can possibly get an audit of the special ed department, maybe with some help from SULPA, to find out how we can more effectively run our special ed department. It seems like, from what I'm hearing from some people, it's already pretty thin, so I have real concerns about that. And then also, it has been brought up that we have an item coming up next, and if we're talking about bringing in 100 students to the high school, we haven't made a decision on what the high school addition is going to be used for. So, let's say we decide that we're gonna try to increase revenue and add X amount of students, and then we find out that that space is not going to be available for many years. It is kind of hard for us to, or not us, sorry, for me, to consider putting that in as extra revenue when we have no idea what's going to be talked about on the next item.
Yeah, is it possible to get the FICMAT study on the special ed?
By first interim? I don't know. I would have to...
I doubt that quickly.
Yeah.
I just mean some kind of advice. You know, like I say, I, I'm a teacher, and I've spoken to people about it, and I've heard that in other districts where they tried to have one person doing special education director, and whatever the other position was, it just didn't work out well.
There's a group called the...
I can't, I can't support that.
The Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistant Team, FICMAT for short, and that's pretty much what they do. They come in and study the efficiency of your operations, and give suggestions. So I was just asking whether we...
Well, that would be more on the financial side, but I'm also just talking for some advice, you know?
No, they do, they do that.
But SULPA can give us some examples on other districts that try to do what we're proposing, and from what I've heard, the results have been pretty bad.
They do advise.
I would like to see that before I can move forward.
Yeah, that, that's, I'm just saying, that is the kind of thing they do, not just financial.
We can reach out to FICMAT.
So...
Jacob, can you clarify the timeline that you're hoping for? There's, there's two different, there's the audit, and then there's the advice from SULPA.
Well, if we're gonna, let's say hypothetically, this goes through, and we're making $800,000 in cuts, we're still not getting the qualified certification. So it's almost the same as just doing zero. So to me, it doesn't need to be two weeks necessarily, it can be three weeks, four weeks, five weeks, six weeks. I mean, the information is very important to me. And from what I've heard from some of the emails, I mean, if we do move forward with this, and then we end up not fulfilling IEPs and other things that we're supposed to do, and it ends up costing us more money, more money in the long run, it's not just, it's not just financial either. It's about not meeting the needs of these children, you know? And special ed has stepped up, you know, since I've been on the board, and we've actually regularly started having agenda items for them. And, you know, just kind of echoing some of the emails I got, you know? It's like, okay, we're gonna really address some of the shortfalls in special ed, but then as soon as the cuts show up, they go for special ed very heavily, and I can't support that.
Okay, so we, we basically have two suggestions in front of the board right now, neither one is in the form of a motion yet. One is to take the cuts that were proposed in the agenda packet tonight, and build those into the budget, which would get us a qualified evaluation by the, by the county, qualified budget. And the other is to ask the administration to bring back 2.5 million dollars in adjustments, not necessarily all cuts, with the understanding that those specific adjustments could change with subsequent budgets, but just to have made a commitment to the county, to the next board, and I'm editorializing here. But, so, we have those two suggestions. I don't know where the board wants to go on this. Kim?
I just, there's such a crowd here. I appreciate everybody coming out on a rainy night and spending these hours here, trying to work through this budget reduction. I, I wanted to go back to the Budget Advisory Committee's conclusion, their final report. So these are, you know, Justice's words and Morgan's word, and everybody else on the committee, they all signed off on this final report. And what they said here is, "It became clear that there is no path to achieving the necessary reductions that completely avoids damage to students' educational experience, or cuts to staff, and impacts morale. There is simply no way AUSD can do what it has been doing, or be quite the school district it has been, with this much less money. The task, then, is for the board to cut in such a way as to minimize negative consequences, with the understanding that avoiding them altogether is not possible." Those are harsh words, and I appreciate the bravery of the Budget Advisory Committee to have put that down and noted that. On the heels of that, I would say that I think it's fairest to the new board for us to direct staff to bring back a budget in December that includes 2.5 million in adjustments. And then we can work out the details of that as a new board.
Okay, is that a motion?
No, I'm gonna leave it to, to you three to make the motion on that.
I'd absolutely recommend, with, with the one caveat, I would go back to the, to the committee's statement, it is not the board's job to make cuts. It is the board's job to approve a budget delivered to the board by the administration. So I would ask that we charge the administration to bring back a proposed budget, for those beyond me to vote on, that would reflect 2.5 million in adjustments, taking what was presented and what was discussed as input, noting in particular the possibility of increased revenue from inter-district transfers, and the general sense of the board that cuts at the district office could be deep, but not necessarily the specific ones pointed out, because there has been feedback from a lot of people on the wisdom of that. But the 2.5 million dollar target is our obligation to, to the county, to the state, to meeting our budgetary needs. And to note, that only keeps us from going under three years out, it doesn't mean we've gone to budget neutral. We're still running deficit spending, I believe, even, even with that.
Okay, is that a motion?
Sure.
Does anyone want to second that? I'll second it.
Okay, so I have some questions. Now we get to discuss the motion. So, my first question for staff is this. My understanding is that the county will not recognize so-called aspirational enrollment figures. That is not definitive enough to actually pass muster with the county, is that correct?
I will have to check with the county.
I'm pretty sure that, 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 that would be the case, because I know that the county has, has frequently come down hard on school districts that project enrollment, which is not realistic at all. And so I don't think that that would actually be considered as a, as a recognizable budget closing measure, even though it might be. So I guess my comment is that I'd actually love to go that route, where we're looking at, maybe it's not a million dollars of increased revenue from increased enrollment, maybe it's a half a million, maybe it's something else. And we have time to do that, because we're really looking at the third year out. We are not going to go in the red this year or next year. I'm actually willing to take the qualified certification and keep working on the process. I mean, if staff really work on increasing enrollment for next year, then we'll have a budget next year that looks a little more optimistic than this year. If we direct staff to make a 2.5 million reduction in the first interim, then in effect, what we are doing is, is directing staff to make all of the reductions that were identified in the Budget Committee report, none of which anyone was comfortable with in Tables 2 and 3. That's the only definitive set of numbers you could put in there. And those are not numbers that I feel comfortable with.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd be perfectly happy, if I were here next month to vote on it, to send the county a budget that we had put the 2.5 million dollars in adjustments into, with the enhanced revenue from additional students, even knowing that the county's likely to reject it, because we at least would have met our obligation, and we have a sincere belief that we can meet those enrollment numbers, which we could argue to the county.
So we could, we could suggest that staff bring back a plan that has 1.5 million dollars of budget reductions and 1 million dollars worth of enrollment base?
Well, I think staff would have to decide what those exact numbers were to get to 2.5. Jacob?
But I thought Jackie just said she had to check with the county. I have an issue with putting money into the 2.5, and then the county says that that doesn't count. I mean, you had just said that they've given other districts a hard time, you know? So it's just, it's, once again, not doing what needs to be done. Basically saying, "We want to do 2.5, we'll do 1.5, we'll slip in the other million, but we're not sure if that's going to count." It's still not doing what we need to do.
A second interim, we would know whether we got those additional students or didn't. I mean, if we're doing it in the middle of the year.
And then some of the things that are in Table 2 and 3, of course, nobody wants to go there, but Kim had just stated what the wrap-up from the Budget Advisory Committee was, is that something is gonna have to get cut, and certain programs or people are gonna be affected. And it's, it's very, very sad, but that's the reality. I mean, I've never wanted to make any of these cuts, but ever since I've been on the board, it's evident that they needed to be done. And the longer we just drag this out, the more painful it's gonna become, you know? I just don't understand why we have something in front of us that we know needs to be done. We've actually made a resolution to the county, and for whatever reason, we can't do it. It's very frustrating.
So we have a motion.
A second.
And a second.
Take a vote on it.
We can revise the motion.
Or you could just take a vote on it.
Or we could take a vote on that motion. Kim, did, what did you want to say?
Well, I wanted to say that it doesn't mean including all of Table 1, Table 2, and Table 3. You know, we, we can, I, I don't think, given the fact that we're moving elementary students around and putting them in temporary housing, that we can take those 30 students in the ATA proposal as increased enrollment in the elementary grades. Sorry. And I don't think we can take any students at the middle school, it's horribly overcrowded, okay? But I think that we can work out a number of students that we could, that, that we could potentially take at the high school. And I don't think that that is so aspirational that it would be rejected by the county. I think that we've been able to serve that number of students before, and, and I think they know that we're a well-respected district, so I don't think we would get in trouble by putting a reasonable increased high school enrollment in our first interim budget. I think we can also use the decreased materials and supplies, and the textbook cut. We can, we can get there to the 2.5 million. And, and the new board can handle, they will have the, the choice to approve exactly those measures, or amending them and making, making changes to them. I, I also feel an obligation to the county to fulfill the resolution.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to ask staff to come back with an interim budget with 2.5 million dollars in adjustments. budget with two and a half million dollars in adjustments, some of which can be enhanced income from additional students, and up to staff to decide how much of that is realistic, and to flesh out all the specifics. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please, starting with the students?
Just to be clear, to clarify, this isn't any action, this is just to set it back to a further date.
This is the action, the action is to give that direction to staff, that they will come back next month with such a budget.
A new proposal.
It's not a proposal at that point, it's an actual budget to be voted on.
Okay.
So could I note that in the past, we have had student votes on issues of, say, should teachers be cut, et cetera, and the students said, I could recuse myself from this, for the obvious reason that I am directly affected by it? I wouldn't at all be dismayed to have a student board member say, you're talking about cuts, changes to the school I'm in, I'd rather not vote on this.
Right, it's an advisory vote, if you want to give your opinion, you can, if you want to abstain, you can do that, too.
Yeah, I'd like to abstain, thank you.
Okay, Michaela?
Yeah, I'd like to abstain as well.
Okay. Kim?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Charlie?
No.
Ross?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to get a last word in?
Ross, you said a bit ago that it's not, you've said a number of times, actually, a number of meetings, that it's not the board's job to set a budget, that you can just approve a budget and make recommendations to Val.
Could you talk into the mic?
So what I think we just watched here was the board moved close, if not definitively, towards saying we would like at the next meeting for staff to come back with a proposed budget, a proposed 2.5 million dollars in cuts. And yet, I would argue that even though it's not the board's job to set the budget, that it is the board's job to make an informed recommendation. And this board has not heard any public comment on anything in Table Two or Table Three, and that seems crazy to me. That next, that two weeks from now, Val is going to come back and say, here are the 2.5 million dollars in cuts, and everyone in this room, I mean, there's, for example, there is administration, one of the four administrators at the high school, that's a proposed cut for next year. So if your children are going to the high school next year, they will have one less administrator. So I don't, I just, I wanted to make sure that people heard that, and hopefully people are surprised and outraged, like I am, that all those things in those tables, I realize it can be revised. And the other thing is, Jacob, to your point about being concerned about aspirational enrollment, I would like to see some more creative solutions and a little more eagerness from the board and staff about trying to solve this problem. What if we pre-enroll people? You know, could there be some sort of official pre-enrollment, so that we know these people are planning to come next year, maybe it's a deposit or something, I don't know, I think you guys are creative, and I don't know what the...
I don't think anyone's afraid that we wouldn't get enrollment, I think the only question is, if we said, here's our budget, because we're anticipating 4,000 students in the district, the county may come back and say, yeah, but given that you only had X number this year, we're not going to let you imagine those numbers.
Fair enough.
And I think what we've said here is, no, we'll try it, and if the county comes back and says, we don't believe those numbers, you know, we could even go so far as to say, well, here's the other thing we would cut if we don't hit those numbers, never expecting we would, because I think we absolutely would get that enrollment.
Okay, well, that's what I was saying, if the county says, no, aspirational enrollment doesn't count, then what I'm saying is, can we be creative? Could we say, let's, maybe the county doesn't say when the earliest you can start enrolling people for the following school year is. I don't know.
So we've taken our vote, and we've finished that item.
We need to move on, there are a lot of people here to talk about the second item, the next item on the agenda.
Can I just make one more comment here? That I just wanted to clarify that before the county certifies either positive or qualified, the board will self-certify before it goes to county. I just wanted to make sure that we are certified.
At the next meeting, you can talk about all of this again, and keep your emails coming.
Just real quickly for the last speaker, as far as bringing this back in two weeks, just because it's coming back in two weeks as review and action, doesn't mean we have to vote on it. So I kind of agree with what you're saying, as far as Two and Three hasn't really been discussed, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that it doesn't mean it has to be voted on in two weeks.
You might need to, to meet the budget deadline, no?
The budget deadline.
Right.
I think you will have to vote on it, but you can take as long as you need to discuss it before you vote.
There is a deadline, but...
And if we don't make the deadline?
Then we go into qualified status, but...
Well, if we don't, if we were going to pass the point, tonight, we were going to go into qualified status.
But I do appreciate the creative ideas, in terms of, can we pre-enroll students? I mean, we'll definitely look into that as well. It would probably mean that I very quickly bring back, revision to board policy, but maybe we can put that on the December as well.
I want to thank everybody for their input, for coming out, for all the emails that you've sent, and for all the comments you've made, and we have heard them all, the superintendent has heard them all.
Will they be shared with the new board members on December 11th? Will they come in with the knowledge that was gained from the community?
Well, hopefully, yeah.
Two of them are here.
Two of them are here, hopefully, anyone who isn't here will have watched the video by then.
I have also, I've also printed out as many of the emails that have come to me, not only for the budget, but also for the next item, and so it would be very easy for me to save money, scan them, and send them to the new board members.
It'll be very inefficient for them not to have heard it, so certainly I hope they...
I have most of them, usually what gets sent to the board, I get a copy of, it helps if I'm CC'd on them as well. Some are not, so I may not have them all, but I'll have most of them.
Okay, thank you all very much, and now we have the Plan for Temporary Housing for Elementary Students. Before we begin this, the meeting is scheduled to end at nine, we're clearly not going to finish at nine. Can we get an extension? The board agreed to extending the meeting?
I would like to suggest an extension until nine thirty, but I'd also like to ask, as I think there's going to be a lot of movement here, can we have a very brief break?
Yeah, let's have a five-minute break. I'd suggest we just extend it till 10 o'clock and...
Might as well, 10 o'clock.
Okay, so we're going to have a five-minute break, and then we're going to come back into session on the next budget. Hey, everybody, we're coming back into session. Let's get this going now, so that we can get out of here while it's still today. Please take your seats. I want to thank the fire department for coming out tonight. As long as the fire marshals are here, we can exceed the maximum permitted for the room. So they're here to make sure everybody stays safe, and I want to thank them for doing that. The next item on the agenda is the Plan for Temporary Housing for Elementary Students. We had a special session on this a week ago, two weeks ago, Thursday...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Four days ago.
And had a lot of people speak, a lot of you are here to speak on it again. We're thankful for your input, we got a lot of emails, and your input's important to us, so let's hear the superintendent's presentation, and then we can get into conversation about it.
Thank you, President Black, Board of Trustees. At the work-study session, the board asked staff to provide answers to several questions, which I provided, I want to go through those very quickly. I'm going to ask Mr. Halpert if he can duck just a little bit, thank you, sir.
I was thinking it was winter.
Can you scroll to the actual slides, please? Okay, thank you, into the next slide, okay. So I did add the criteria, the quality of... So, um, I did add the criteria, the quality of instructional program that was discussed at the work-study session. Next slide, please. Okay, so the question was, can bonds be used for busing students? We did check with legal. Yes, an argument could be made that we, uh, that the busing would not have occurred had we not had the situation of needing to renovate and rebuild schools. And since Albany does not provide, I'll say, general education busing, then we could use bonds. The cost of busing, if we use 10 buses, gives you the amount per day, per bus, and then the daily rate. This is if all the buses go at once to the school. What we did is we asked the busing company to give us the information. They provided us with two pieces of information. We could have five buses at $7.95 per bus, um, per day, and then you get five buses doing two drops. And this is for 80, 180 instructional days. Next slide, please. What is the cost of leasing an existing school site? It's about $2 to $2.50 per square foot, per month. Now, these are very rough numbers because it really depends on who the leasing agent is. So we'd need about 50,000 square feet for Ocean View. You see how much it would cost yearly, and then there, if you do a three-year lease, that is how much it would cost. So, um, you would need to add this cost to busing of students if we bust students. So it would probably depend upon how close that existing school site is. Next slide, please. Okay, what is the cost to build a portable school? So I did it two different ways. Um, one was purchase and one was lease. So, um, if you want to put all of Ocean View's students, we need 20, 29 portables. We have six existing portables on the Ocean View campus. And so it tells you the cost there. If we were to sell back the portables, we would get about 30% to 50% back if they're sold within three years. If you sold it back four to six years, obviously, the sale price might be less. And there are other costs that are not necessarily included, things like site prep, striping, fencing, all the DSA fees, all the hookups, fire alarms, et cetera. Next slide, please. So what's the cost to build a portable school? Based on a three-year lease, there you have the three-year lease. And again, other costs would be inclusive, so it's a little bit cheaper, but you would not get the resale back on those. Next slide, please. What is the impact of having two grades at Ocean View through construction? Two grades, we believe, can be accommodated. So you could use the current fifth-grade wing. You could use, there are four portables that could be used. I hope I get these numbers right. The two portables are, uh, excuse me, the two rooms are attached to the multipurpose room. I believe that's 30 and 31. And then there are the two white portables. I'm going to call them rooms 40 and 41. We would need to have some standalone services. Depending on how many grades end up at what school, if we end up placing students at three different school sites, we would need some admin support at Ocean View. We'd need some support services, before and after care. If you have two grades, there is the before and after care portables that are on-site. We would need to look at noon activities. We have been and continue being in conversation with the YMCA to look at before and after care and noon activities. And then, of course, custodial office staff and food services. Next slide, please. What is the impact of three grades? So in three grades, you'd have four classes in the fifth-grade wing, four in the existing portables. You would have to put four classes in the before and after-school portables, which would impact the before and after-school program. Or you could add additional portables on the blacktop play area, or you can add four additional portables on Ocean View Park where the district owns the property. Next slide, please. So this kind of gives you an idea of the square footage that is available where you would need to, where you could possibly place portables. One of the things to consider, and I know this is really hard to see a little bit, but one of the things you have to consider is when Ocean View is being renovated and rebuilt, where is the construction equipment going to go? The, um, they call like the, the construction shack, I guess. I hate to use the word shack, but it's the portable that they put, that sometimes is put on the street. Next slide, please. Okay, other things to consider, if you look at a portable school. Construct, again, contractor-construction crews. Think about what the building and the areas that need to be renovated, considering things like noise pollution, air quality. Outdoor play space is going to be a challenge. The only outdoor play space that would be available potentially if blacktop space is taken up would be Ocean View Park. And of course, additional supervision, and then the safe ingress and egress of students during the construction time. Next slide, please. Another question was asked, what are the options for before and after care for the growing needs of parents? And this was for kinder. So we met with the YMCA, and they said they could provide morning kinder program where the PM students attend and eat lunch with the Y prior to going to class. Students would bring their lunch, or the YMCA could pick up the lunches from Cornell. YMCA can also provide the afternoon kinder program where AM-scheduled students get picked up, taken to the Y. Students bring their lunch, or YMCA can pick up lunches from Cornell. So ACC does offer a childcare program. It's 7:30 to 6:00, and lunch could be part of the program. So when we met with the YMCA, we also met with, um, having our elementary principals and having our ACC director there. Next slide, please. Okay, and I, we added this in there for, this is just the full-cost family fee schedule. This is for, um, for ACC. Next slide, please. Okay, and then she added in there the cost for childcare for TK and K families. It might increase with the AMPM schedule, and that is to support the childcare budget. They would, they would need to increase personnel. Uh, there was a question that was asked, a subsequent question. Why is it that if they're, if they're there for a certain amount of hours a day, it's 780? If it's more than that, why is it 780? Is it anything over a certain amount of hours, it's the same rate? Next slide, please. Can TK and K be on different schedules, early bird, late bird, AMPM? Education Code says yes, we can. We can have them differently, as long as we make sure that we adhere to the other general requirements. Some of the general requirements really have to do with charter schools. Others have to do with not exceeding a certain amount of minutes per day. So, um, so for example, the kindergarten program cannot exceed the length of the primary school day. So yes, you can have TK and K be on separate schedules. Next slide, please. Can TK and K be on different, did I just?
Oh, you covered that.
Oh, I just, that's just more information. Okay, it's more information I added for the ed code. Okay. What is the city plan for parent drop-off and parking at AMS? So I contacted the city, and this is what was sent out to, I believe, um, I think it was the San Gabriel residence. I'm not 100% sure, but this is what was sent out, was provided to me. The 60-foot wide loading zone on the east side, one on the south side, and then looking at the 135-foot loading zone on the north side of Brighton. Next slide, please. Okay. And of course, having the red zones near the crosswalk and then the striping. It's important to know that this, I'm not sure if it's in the next slide. Can you go to the next slide? No, I'm sorry, go back to the previous one. So, um, the next steps are, I, I got an email from Jeff Bond, and I believe what they're doing is that they're sending this information to the San Gabriel residence, and, um, he sent it to San Gabriel residence. I'm not sure 100% if he'll be soliciting feedback or not. Okay, but I do know that he sent it out. And next slide, please. Okay, how can kinder's schedule be expanded for working parents? So I met with the elementary principals, and we looked at, could the AMPM kinder's schedule be extended? It could be extended one day. Sorry, it says day, one day a week, instructional day, one day a week. And then we have before and after care options available. And a lot of this has to do with prep schedules and just making sure that what, what, how much PE students get, if they get music, if they get library, and how that would work. Next slide, please. Okay, how can AMS use as much of the annex as possible? So Ocean View needs a drama room for lunch period from 11:00 to 1:00. AMS said that they would need to check their master schedule. The drama room could be open from 8:00 to 10:45, and then from 1:15 to 3:05. So to accommodate this plan, Ocean View would need PE space somewhere on the main Albany Middle School campus, Monday through Friday from 9:30 to 2:00. And Ocean View and AMS are continuing discussions on the need for library space and the use of the computer lab. It becomes a little bit more challenging if you've got students at three different campuses, how library is going to work, and then, of course, how to do the other support services. And next slide, please. Is that it? Okay, thank you. So those are the questions that the board had asked me to, to bring back. And I have met, I continue to meet, you know, with our elementary principals, and I know a lot of folks have sent me emails, and I have read every single one. I have them in a binder as well. And I know the board has received them as well. So, um, this is information that I was able to respond to the board questions on, and I'll open it to the board.
Okay, I noticed there are a number of people here with signs that say option one. So for the benefit of those who are new to this process, could you review what the various options are with their numbers so that we know what we're talking about?
Yes. So option one is transitional kindergarten at ACC on an AMPM schedule.
Is that possible to put that up on the?
Can we?
Okay, we'll talk about it while she's trying to get it up.
So option one is transitional kindergarten at ACC in an AMPM schedule. Kindergartners at Cornell and Marin on an AMPM schedule. Grades one through three at the AMS annex, and grades four through five, we remain at Ocean View until Albany High School new addition is available. Option two.
1A, I think. Because that's the main competitor there.
Option, excellent, keep going. Yes, scroll down, please, and next one. Okay, option 1A, there we go. TK at ACC, kinders in portables. Then everyone would be on an early bird, late bird schedule, and the portables would be placed either at an existing school site or at Ocean View Park. Grades one through three at the annex, grades four or five at the high school.
Okay, so the main difference, or the difference between 1 and 1A is that with 1A, we don't go to AMPM kindergarten, but we do have to pay for four portables. Is that right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. If, if, if this were the only plan where grades one through three went to the annex and four or five went to the high school, you could have kinder, if kinder remained at Ocean View, would be in, um, they would have to be in a portable existing where they would have bathrooms, because kinders have to have bathrooms. So they would be probably placed in, there's several options. They could be placed in the before and after care portables, like Cedars, the four portables that are at Ocean View. We could drop four portables on Ocean View that, and they do have portables that have bathrooms in them. I did take a look at the possibility of dropping two portables at Marin and two portables at Cornell, and that would, in my opinion, severely impact play space at both those sites. Next slide, please. Option two is postpone Ocean View construction for one year. Wait until AMS and HS are complete and ready for student occupancy. Then we would revisit options 1, 1A, and possibly 3 and 4. Option three, build a portable school. Fifth grade could remain in the Ocean View fifth-grade wing. K4, we'd put them in as many portables as we can, and then, of course, would have to drop additional portables. And we would probably end up taking up all available blacktop space and possibly Ocean View Park. Next slide, please. Option four is lease a school site in nearby town. And I think in the next slide, it shows the options that I, it just gives you, it gives you pros and cons of each. I did look at schools, I think we looked at three or four different schools in the area, and they're either all in escrow, some are too small. We did look at one school in, we made an inquiry about one school in Oakland. That school is currently leased, but they did say, check back with them in a year.
Okay, before we take public comment, any board members want to talk about this? Charlie?
So first, I wanted to appreciate staff for doing the research on all of those questions. That was a lot of work, and thank you for bringing that information. I also wanted to bring up two more questions, one of which I had sent to you in advance, and I think it's appropriate for it to be heard in public. I asked you to consult with the district's bond attorney to determine if option one was even legal within the bond language. I thought it might be a good idea to find that out. And the answer that he provided to you was yes, as long as it's temporary. But temporary was not defined in his answer, but apparently it's not necessarily illegal. So thank you for checking that out for me. The second question I have is actually related to the background information. That's on page 38 of the board agenda. There it is, right, right there. So the last line under background information says something I wasn't expecting to see. It says, "The Ocean View construction is projected to begin in January 2020." Is that a typo, or is that something new? Because all along, we've been assuming it would begin in, say, August of 2019.
That might be a typo. Wait, wait, hang on, let me, let me think, hang on, let me think.
The reason I'm asking is that we have talked about how the high school addition will not be completed by August of 2019, but would be expected to be done, there it is, December 2019. It almost looks to me like there's, there's, um, I'm not sure where it slipped in. There's an idea there that we wouldn't actually start Ocean View construction until after the high school addition was completed, and that's new to me.
That was option two, I think.
Please.
Hi, my name's Teri. I'm the principal at Ocean View. I remember the discussion that had to do with whether or not we had students on Ocean View campus. So if our students were going to be there for a short time, for those six months, what I remember was the architect speaking that there wasn't a lot of money saved by doing the primary demolition during the summer and then waiting for us to leave in January. If we were leaving in January, then they would just wait till January and do it then. So in other words, there was, again, there was no cost savings or any benefit for them to bring in demolition equipment, demo, leave, wait for us to leave, and then come back and do the work. So if the plan is different, and we're going to live there from point A to point Z, then I think your architects could talk about when they start, and all of that could look different. But they were going from the premise that we were going to be there for a short period of time and then leave. That's, that's, Val, that's what I remember.
Charlie?
So now I'm a little more confused about that because it sounds like the whole Ocean View site would be available for the first semester of the next school year. So effectively, we've slid into option one and a half or some such thing.
I think it's option two, really.
Option two, we've slid halfway into option two. I'm just confused about what this is.
You know, actually, what I'm going to ask is, I, I want to go back and double-check this because I'm remembering that conversation. I remember having a conversation with, with Juan Burroughs. So, but I, can I, want to just go back and verify that Juan is here? I'm sorry, I'm seeing so many people. Hi, Juan.
We need you at the microphone, Juan.
Welcome, Juan. This was about the Ocean View construction projected to begin January 2020, and I'm remembering the conversation that we had, what Terry just explained. So can you elaborate a little bit more on the January 2020?
Sure. Well, good evening, members of the board and the public. I heard your question. And so the, the plan has always been for construction to break around in January 2020. So if you look at the timeline that we're in now, we're making a selection of a design-build team. build team in the next couple of months. So then, the design process would go through the spring to early summer. We would submit to DSA in the summer timeframe of '19, projecting an approval by DSA in about the December '19 timeframe. So then, that would lead to a January 2020 groundbreaking.
Okay, so this is interesting. So I'm still not seeing why we would move any Ocean View students until then. Is that, is that now the plan, that we're not moving any Ocean View students until January 2020?
You're going to have to move campus over winter break.
I don't know. I'm asking, I'm asking.
Yep, so.
I'm asking.
Right, one of the, some of the conversations we had was, what is an optimal time to move students, okay? And being able to move students prior to the beginning of the school year, especially for our primary grades, I guess it would necessarily merit if it's primaries or upper grades, but to be able to have teachers in their classrooms, in their new site, albeit temporary, when school starts. We know that two grades we could keep at Ocean View until the high school was open so that we could move them over at that time. I think it'd be a little bit challenging, maybe problematic, that, to leave potentially the middle school that is open vacant for an entire year, or have middle school use the annex and then have them move out and then moving kids in, right? And the high school's a little bit different, when the high school's done, then you can move the kids in. So.
So this means that most of the school would move, except the students who were slated to go into the high school addition, and they would move in January over winter break?
They would, the two grades would move in January, unless there was another option where they would not be moving. I mean, my Option 1, which is what I recommend and so recommend, is that you would move grades 1 through 3, some grades, to the middle school, and then have the other grades move to the high school when it is open.
Okay, so they're not, no students would then be on campus during construction?
Ideally, yes. In Option 1, no students will be on campus during construction. I don't know if they can, if they can demo during the summer, but then we end up having, you know, some questions around, is it cost prohibitive to demo in the summer, then wait and then come back? Or do we leave two grades on the Ocean View campus until the high school is open? And, you know, we could try construction early, but it would really depend on whether DSA would get us the approvals.
Okay. Ross?
So I'm going to remove all the suspense on where I might come down on all this, to say, I'm a realist, and I've been on the board since 2014, and seen things like the plan for Marin that took ages, and the DSA took months, and then we have a plan approved by the DSA for the school we don't plan to build. So I am not at all prepared to vote on moving students anywhere until I see the construction plan. Okay, this board has not seen the plan for an Ocean View at all since the old one, which ended when Ron Rosenbaum and I were on the site committee for considering that plan. So I think absent an idea of what Ocean View would actually look like, and I think that means revisiting what Ocean View and Marin can look like, given the budget that there is or isn't, I think it's putting a cart before the horse to imagine we're going to have portables here and et cetera, et cetera, and we're sort of doing an awful lot of deck chair rearranging, where the real question is how big an iceberg is still ahead of us. So I would rather kick this to, unfortunately, the new board, to have a very good idea of what it looks like Ocean View and Marin ought to be. And as the skeptic from my start on the board, where the thought was the state would fund the construction of both new elementary schools at zero cost to us, I'd really like to revisit the, what are we tearing down, and what can we keep, and where should we really spend dollars?
So the concern that I have is, if we don't move any students until January, then you have a middle school annex that is potentially, two things are going to happen. It either is open for Albany Middle School. Then, okay, and then it, and then if that happens, if that happens, then you can't even look at Option 1, because in order to have the students on the middle school campus, we would have to then say that the middle school faculty and students would have to vacate the annex, go back into the portables, and back into their main site.
So Deborah, could we give you temporarily for a year or two some site, and then you'd have to vacate it as needs arise?
We will take it as much as possible.
And could we put, say, district office staff in that building for several years while we realign things? Could we put district staff there? Say, I don't see a problem with the idea that we've got a surplus temporarily of space. I don't see this community saying, hey, you gave us a space to temporarily squat and we're never leaving. You know, we can move people around, we do. That shouldn't be our problem. Our problem should be more the fact that we do not have a plan on hand for those two elementary schools, and yet we're debating where we put the people before we build them.
Jacob first.
Yeah, so the whole board has received many, many emails about this whole issue, and I'm sure we're all up here trying to do what's best for the community as a whole, and I appreciate everybody advocating for what they think is best for the whole school. I do understand that we do want to retain as much of the funds as we can as possible for, I don't know, we're not tearing them down and building them completely, but to do the reconstruction or whatever of both of the schools. I would like to, at one point, I don't know if right now is the right time, but I've actually come up with some scenario, which is Option 3, which is the portable school, which I have it coming out to a cost of $1 to $1.4 million to not have to go to AMPM, to not have to move these kids all around, and I think out of a $95 million BNE budget, to be able to have the least amount of disruption to everybody in the school district for a price tag of $1 to $1.4 million, I think should at least be heard.
Okay, so what I've heard so far is that not everyone on the board thinks that we're ready to even vote on this tonight. So the question is, we've heard from some people that they need a decision quickly, because if we're going to move, we need to be prepared for it. Can you tell us what that need is and why, before we go any farther? Because if we're not going to make the decision tonight, all these good people can get to bed early.
We've already heard mine needs to be rushed through.
Well, let's hear that.
Hear it again? Okay.
So did you want me to answer the question first, before you have folks come to see? Okay, I'm actually going to ask Teri if she can go to the podium and to help me with some of these answers. So to move a school will take months. You have to pack up, you have to plan on where you're going, you have to be able to unpack, we have to get a moving company to help us. I don't think that we have the custodial maintenance staff and enough people to make that move. So there's a lot of prep that has to happen. We have to finalize details around all the support services, where people are going to go. If we have to create a portable school, then on our end, not on the school's end, but on our end, we're going to have to see how fast we can contract with a portable company, where we're going to be laying the portables, all the hookups that we're going to have to do with PG&E, sewer, water. And I'll turn over to Teri for the logistics regarding school site, because there's support staff as well that we have to make plans for.
Right. I guess where I want to start by answering some of your answers is basic facts, that the middle school will be ready for the fall of this coming year. That allows us, as a school, to, one, follow the mission of the school district, as you guys mentioned at the very beginning, as far as offering a qualified educational program for all students. That includes Ocean View students. And that allows us to plan in the way in which Val began to explain. I had a meeting today with my leadership team, where my reading specialists were speaking for all of our specialists, and were saying, are we going to have to change the way in which we provide programming? Will we have any space available for us? Will we even have jobs? Because perhaps we won't be able to provide these services. If we knew in a short period of time that we were planning for some of our school to move in the healthiest time, which should be during the summer, so that my staff can begin to be prepared for that, then we can work with the middle school around what it is we need to do to make life better for both groups while we're there, because the school is available at that time. Asking an entire school to move mid-year and/or have a building sit empty for a year while we get ready, and/or ask the logistics, give the middle school their school, let them move in all their new equipment, and when you have elementary students come in, they can't use that same desk, that same chair, that same materials. So now the district needs to store all that stuff, or they need to sell and get rid of the old, and where are they going to store that in the meantime? Well, the annex is being used. So something needs to be done with desks and materials in the classrooms. When you're considering portables for kindergarten, you have to consider bathrooms for all of them, and if you don't, then you're going to be hiring aides to toilet students back and forth during the school day, as we did with our transitional kindergarten with us last year. The logistics of prepping and making sure we have office staff, we have supervision, we have lunch service, we have recess space appropriate for their age, that we have support services, special ed, resource, OT, psych, speech, where are they going to be housed? All of that requires planning. And if we don't know where we're going to go, or we're going to be asked to wait, which is viable, but in that case, be honest, don't lie, and tell us that you're costing out of the money for both us and Marin, it's not going to happen. Because if I read what Val had up on here around how much portables cost to either lease or purchase, that is going to take about 25% of Ocean View's budget to rebuild a school. It's not $1 million. What I saw was $7,000 each way for buses. I saw purchase, $8,000, or was it $8,000 or $8 million for purchase of portables with a 30% return if you purchased them, and you're purchasing them then for several years. Or if you're leasing, it's $5 million. Our budget for our school alone is under $30,000, so now we're reducing it by $5 million, or is Marin taking on half of that cost? So you're changing the whole plan for whether or not we're being rebuilt by saying we're going to wait an additional year, or you're going to use bond money for all of this, because that, as I've been through all the design team meetings, is that's a hard number. We're being asked to live inside that number. And the minute you start pulling from the bond, then that number somewhere has to drop. And if that's going to be the case, then, boy, we should know right away, because I'm meeting with the teams this Thursday to go over the plans and talk about what are the changes they need to make in order to stay inside the current budget they've been given, which is $29 million.
Charlie?
So I just want to offer a couple of dates on the timeline that are critical. So picking up on Ross's point that we haven't seen a design yet, the design committee has been doing interviews with the three potential design build teams, and those are ongoing, and those will be completed, and they will be submitting their proposals December 21st. So those will be scored, and then the winning proposal will be brought back to the board January 22nd of next year for approval.
So 2019.
2019, yeah. So at that point, it's crucial that the board take an action, because what will control costs is the guaranteed maximum price in the contract. The board needs to actually get a proposed bid and approve it on January 22nd and lock in a guaranteed maximum price. After that, when it actually begins, has some flexibility. So in terms of the total dollar amount, what's been allocated for Ocean View is $39 million total budget, which, you know, I hope people appreciate that represents 40% of our bond money. And I've heard a lot of comments, and I think we have to recognize that, that over the course of time, the original $135 million of facilities needs got pared back to a $95 million bond measure that could be approved by the community. And in the process of that, what got zeroed out were improvements for Cornell, for Albany Children's Center, what got zeroed out was the Albany Middle School multipurpose room, and then in the course of the middle school annex project, the culinary arts room got zeroed out. So I think we have to just keep that bigger picture in mind, that we have really focused resources on Ocean View and Marin because they are seismically deficient, and that's appropriate. It really is appropriate. What we have allocated is $29 million in the construction budget, $39 million total. So the $10 million difference covers all the soft costs. Those are fees, everything you have to pay to the state to review and approve the plans. Once the contract is approved, $29 million will be the construction budget, and none of the soft costs will come out of that. That's the money that goes into building the building. So that date is critical. That's what has to happen. Then, in terms of what else can get covered, it's $10 million to cover everything else. Now, originally, when we first looked at a budget in 2015, what was penciled in there was $2 million for temporary housing as part of that soft costs. And we've kind of let that slide over time as costs have gone up, that got squeezed It's possible that there could be an allocation of funding for some kind of temporary housing to the tune of a million dollars or so that would not come out of the construction budget. So I think we just have to not let the fear of it costing us construction dollars get in the way of thinking through what actually needs to be done. So those are the dates and the timelines. I hope the next board is ready to approve that construction budget January 22nd.
Ross?
Just a couple of comments. One is, I've heard, I've heard a couple of times, once tonight and prior, various assumptions like the middle school annex will open up filled with middle schoolers and all their brand-new furniture. No, doesn't have to. You know, if I said, here, here's a bare space, I'm giving you a dozen new classrooms, AMS, move your existing furniture in there for now, because we're not going to buy a whole bunch of furniture, because, you know, there are lots of weird fixed things that don't have to be fixed. We have a lot more flexibility than I'm hearing. Second, you know, if I pick three of you at random and ask you to make a decision on the Ocean View campus, you'll probably be about as grounded as the new board members. They're all here tonight, but they haven't sat down with site plans, they haven't been a part of the design team, et cetera. I think that's an over-optimistic guess, that their second full meeting, they will bless what will be the plan for Ocean View, much less any idea what's going to happen at Marin. You know, I've been skeptical that the best plan, from the get-go, that the best plan was to scrape two existing schools because of seismic concerns, when the seismic concerns are, if there's a major earthquake, there will be problems reoccupying the building, right? We've got an explicit confirmation that it wasn't going to fall down on people, right? If we have a major seismic event, and that means we've got to bulldoze three of the pods at Marin and replace them with portables, we've pretty much come back to where we were, okay? I've been the skeptic on this, and I was always bothered that there was never a real thorough examination of how to address the seismic concerns. So I would really rather have the new board sit down and make a serious look at the money available and the need. available and the need. Charlie didn't mention that the other thing that fell off was anything with the little theater. We have a little theater that seats 300 students. And every one of the classes at the high school are larger than 300. You can't get a single grade into the one performance space the district owns.
The juniors, there's 265 juniors.
And we can squeeze in the juniors. Rah! You know, I'm really bothered by the idea that what's driving this is that we think we're going to get two brand-new elementaries, when we're short of that already. I'd like to see it, before Allen left, his budget on the two elementaries was stretched beyond thin. You know, if we skip furniture, we can do this. If we drop this, you know, these classrooms, we could get those. I don't want to build a bare minimum school and just squeak out two elementaries we're not going to be particularly proud of. I'd much rather have the board reexamine this whole process.
Wow. Should we, are we ready to take public comment, or?
No.
Okay.
Charlie has more. Okay. Well, this is really a difficult topic. I am on the design-build committee for Ocean View, and I can attest that we are in these final interviews with the architect contractor teams, and I fully expect, I know that we're going to get a proposal, you know, with an actual plan to the board in January. The previous times when that has happened for the annex and for the AHS addition, it has been approved by the board, because the design-build committee worked so hard and so diligently on the plan from the beginning. You know, there's pre-work long, you know, for you to set up the original proposal, and then you put that out to the building community, and they come back in teams with their specific elaborations of that proposal. It takes years. And we're there, we're almost at the finish line for Ocean View. I'm concerned about, you know, it seems like there's still things on the table that, back when I was on the Facilities Task Force, were getting pulled off the table. When Alan Gard was still here and working with the Facilities Task Force, you know, we determined that there was simply not enough money in the bonds to build the schools we want and to lease a school. And we looked into several different options for building portable elementary and rejected that because the cost was so great. And so I don't know why we're still talking about the idea of, you know, wouldn't a portable school be great? Yes, it would. You know, if we had somewhere to put it, and we don't, you know, the plan as it stands is making this assumption that the city is going to be willing to give up Ocean View Park. And we don't have any indication that, I don't think that the city has been approached about that. We can't put our eggs in that basket. So it seems like to me we're really looking at option one, option one A, and possibly some other ideas that have come out recently. The email lines have been hot the past week. For option one A, which I know a lot of people prefer because that keeps our early-bird, late-bird kindergarten intact, I'm still not hearing where those portables would be located. You know, and until we have a place to put those portables down, I mean, we just can't have, you know, kids off by themselves on a slab. I would love to maintain our early-bird, late-bird kindergarten, but I need to know where it's going to go if we do that. I also want to bring up one of the plans that I had heard mentioned via email, and that's that we move fourth and the fifth graders to the annex. And then we would, of course, have to find, you know, we have to find a good, workable space for the first through thirds. And I wonder if we can't work with the contractor builder so that we can maintain enough space at Ocean View so those students can have their current facilities. You know, if we build more in a phased process, then I think we might be able to keep more classes there. And the facilities are adequate. You know, they're what's being used now. I mean, I hope that we-- One reason that we're doing this building program is not just because of the, we can increase seismic safety by doing this. That's a big reason. But we also want to get away from the unusually small and oddly shaped classrooms that we've had. We've heard from teachers for years that these classrooms are difficult to teach in. And when we were at the tour of the AMS annex, still under construction, and the Ocean View teachers were there, they were aghast the size of a regular standard classroom. Yeah. And so there's other benefits to this building program. I think that everybody will be very, very happy when we get to the end result and we have these schools built. We have a difficult process now, sort of making that happen. But I would, I think that, I think that not every reasonable option has been fully explored. And I think that some options that are just simply cost prohibitive appear that they're still on the table, and we should make an acknowledgement that they're not viable so that we can work with the real possibilities.
Thank you. Michaela?
I don't see.
Okay. Jacob, and then Charlie, and then I'd love to get--
Yeah, I keep hearing the phrase "cost prohibitive," and I have a real issue with the amount of the portables and the number of portables changing from just 1115. So at the meeting just 12 days ago, in the board packet that was presented that night, said that if we were going to possibly look at option three, that we were going to need 16 portables? Mm-hmm? I don't think so.
It had fifth grade.
It said 16 portables.
That's for classrooms.
Yeah, but still, it's saying that we needed 16 portables, then all of a sudden we need 23 portables. The price has gone up, so if it wasn't enough as an issue being cost prohibitive on the 15th, it's come back now to look like it's even more cost prohibitive because the prices have changed and the number of portables have changed. So if we're talking about being upfront and saying that we shouldn't even discuss different options because they're not viable, well, if we have some time, I can go over the one that I spent time on where I see it being from $1 to $1.2 million, and people have questioned that, so I'd like to go over it--
I'd like to hear it.
--at one point, because this happened at the last meeting. We're just dismissing certain possibilities because some people, community members, administrators, board members have just decided that, in their opinion, it's cost prohibitive.
Can we hear your proposal?
Sure. I would love to go through it.
Let's hear it.
So this is just kind of a rough draft, okay? But as far as the numbers might not be exactly 100%, you know, but the numbers that we've gotten from staff have changed since just the last board meeting. So I'm going to use the numbers that came in the packet on the 15th, as far as the cost of some of these things. But just to start off, it would be option three, which would be the portable school at Ocean View. And the fifth graders would be in the fifth grade wing, which would take care of the fifth grade class. The fourth graders would be in the two portables that they currently use and the two extra rooms that are attached to the multipurpose room. The third grade would be the four portables that are already currently there on the basketball courts. Second grade would be, if we did this option, middle school would use their site, so the four portables at the middle school would come down to Ocean View, which would take care of the second grade. And then we're with four portables for first grade and four portables for K, which is a total of eight portables. And if you look at the numbers from the board packet that went out on the 15th, four purchased portables is $970,000, so I'll go ahead and round that up to $1 million. So four portables is $1 million, eight portables is $2 million. We've been told we can get up to 30% to 50% of that back if we sell them. So if we spent $2 million on portables and we get 50% back, that's $1 million. If we spend $2 million on portables and we get 30% back, that's 1.4 million that we spent. And it doesn't have kids having to go to the AM/PM schedule, which we've had a lot of parents talk about. It alleviates the overcrowding at the middle school, which, once again, was part of Measure B and E. I've read all these emails, and it just seems like people have selective memory as far as what Measure B and E was about. It's all about the new schools, and I'm glad Ross brought it up. The whole construction stuff that we would have liked to have done is about $130 million. So when we went out and we passed Measure B and E for $95 million, it was never going to be enough to do everything. And as I got on the board and as time went by, it became apparent to people that they weren't getting that. So instead of just realizing that we didn't have enough money to do everything we wanted, all of a sudden it became, let's hold on to every single last dollar to get as much construction that we can do. And it just seemed like they weren't concerned about any of the other sites in the district or any of the other families who sent me emails, who said it's going to be a serious hardship for them. And as far as these numbers, please tell me where I'm wrong. Because out of $95 million, to spend $1 million--
I can't--
--to not have all this disruption in the whole district, I think is worth having people talk about.
Julie Kujue. Would you go back to 15th meeting and page 16? And page 16. So that cost does not include cost to plan and construct a foundation for portables.
If they're on the blacktop at the thing, we don't need to do that. And Val had mentioned at the other meeting, you don't have to put down cement. There's companies that can put something down, so don't--
Right.
So, yes, if you put it on the blacktop, then you don't have that cost of the foundation. The portable can be put down on ground. There, you would, we would have to, if it's on, like, say, Ocean View Park, what we would have to construct is the cement pathway back to the main campus, and that's more for ADA.
And then on a side note, we keep hearing that we can't just do what we want to do with Ocean View Park. We can't do what we want to do with the city's park. We own part of that land.
We do own--
And we would want to consult with them, but it's just all these, like, stops. This is why we can't do it. Oh, you didn't talk to the city. What is the city going to have to say about this, right? You said it at the last meeting. Essentially, we can do what we want with our property.
If it is Albany Unified School District property, we can't. I also want to be very mindful of the fact that we have Little League and we have--
I get that, but it's just, you guys are dismissing people by throwing out these, just, oh, we can't do this because of that.
I'm not dismissing anybody. I am sharing with you--
Other people have been dismissing a lot of other options based on not the whole picture.
So I don't know if you want to add more about the cost, but the cost of the-- If you had a portable school, yes, you can keep the fifth graders in the fifth grade wing. The fourth graders can go into the portables. If you put another grade in the four after, before, and aftercare programs, that's Cedars and the other four.
Right.
I call them the woods, Cedars, Redwoods, Maples, okay? Now, that's three grades. To put-- I'm missing K. With three more grades onto that campus, that takes up pretty much all available space in order for the grade levels, okay? That leaves only, the only play space available, if you didn't, if you put everything on existing blacktop, you would have, the only play space available would be Ocean View Park. That doesn't even include portables that we're going to need for support services for the administration, all the things that Terry had mentioned, right? Counseling services, OT, AT, speech, special ed, administration, secretaries, I'm sorry? Childcare. And the other piece is that there's--
Library.
Sorry, thank you, the library was the other one. Before and aftercare, it would be really tough. If you had three grades there, maybe we could have before and aftercare in the multipurpose room. I don't think, and I appreciate that you got to $2 million, because if you explained it to me, I can see it sort of theoretically, but you're going to need more portables than that. The other piece I'm getting really concerned about is where are we going to put the play structure? Where are the kids going to play? Where are they going to have recess? I'm concerned about where the construction crews are going to put their, sorry, I don't know, earth crawlers, diggers, all their machinery. Do they put that on Ocean View Park? Do they put that on the blacktop? Because the more space you incur, the less space you have for kids.
And these are things that could have been actually proposed a long time ago. Like I said before, it was already option one was basically what we were doing.
But we had--
So at the last second, I had to come up with some alternative, and I understand it's not fitting in exactly how, you know?
But you have option one A, which talks about housing--
Or we can have an option one B or option one C. There's still other possibilities.
I think that there are other possibilities, but I think that, and, guys, I apologize, I mean, you know I don't usually get so passionate about things that I want to keep talking, but this one I am. When I look at the possibility of what Ocean View teachers and students are going to have to go through in terms of what space do they not, are they not going to have by building an entire portable school on Ocean View, I am still not being able to see how that is going to fit within the square footage. And yes, we would have to go into Ocean View Park. And yes, that is our property. And yes, we could tell the city we're going to do that. We can. The splitting up of the grades was another option. I talked to Terry today, and I said, could you please, you know, she reached out to her staff, could we put three grades on there? What would be the impact? And then what would happen? Could we maybe have one less grade or two less grades over at the middle school? And now you have an Ocean View school that is separated into three sites. I have a principal who doesn't have a VP, who is going to have to go between Albany Middle and Albany High School, which means there's going to need to be administrative support at Ocean View. What do I do with that? Do I borrow? I'm just asking the question, not saying it's Val's plan. But do I borrow one of the vice principals from the high school and say, I need you over at Ocean View, and we're going to give you some experience as a VP there? Do I put one of my staff at the elementary school and be an administrator for three grades and doing their job? I mean, those are all things that we have to consider. And with all due respect to the middle school folks, and I understand, I get it, but I have to say this, and please forgive me if you guys all think I'm wrong. If the middle school annex is opened up for an entire year to the middle school teachers and students, I have a hard time understanding that they're willing to give it up a year later and say, okay, now we're going to have elementary folks move in, and middle school folks, we're going to put you back in where you're at.
Yes. We're saying yes. We're saying yes.
I thought I heard, I thought I heard Ms. Brill say yes. So now you're basically--
No, what I heard, what I heard--
You're calling them out.
What I heard Ms. Brill said was, we'll take any space we can get.
Yeah. Three rooms on Park.
So you're saying you're willing to move out a year from now?
We move out a year. We move out our classrooms every year. Three classrooms per year. And I'm on Park every year.
Okay, you know, this is being broadcast, and you're not being hurt. Deborah, you want to make a comment?
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. No, not very.
So I think, I think what I want to say is, you know, I've gotten up to speak at board meetings before and never have a problem with public speaking, but this is the first time I've gotten up, and I, my heart feels heavy, I have a pit in my stomach, and I feel like this situation that we've been put in is not fair. And I look around the room at the option one signs, and I look at our Ocean View colleagues, I look at our Ocean View parents, and I think what I want to say is, like, we're all trying to make things work and trying to figure out how things will work for our students. And, you know, Ocean View families, if I can have AMS staff, teachers, just raise your hand. Ocean View parents, those are your teachers in the future. We are all a very small district, and they are all--
Thank you.
We are all a very small district and they are all, and they, and they are your students and we are all here. Just let me talk for a sec. What I want to say is that from the beginning, from the beginning AMS has been completely overlooked. And it started off in the beginning when we found out that the annex was being considered to be used. We found out at a board meeting. We weren't aware of that all along the way. We found out at a public board meeting that the annex wasn't going to be used by AMS students. And what we've been trying to say all along the way is that we, we need us a solution that works for all of our students, right? We're saying there's a million reasons why this thing won't work. We're talking about Little League. We're talking about everything, but we're not talking about the needs of the middle school students. And what I want to say is that they have needs too. We are so overcrowded there. Kids can't move through the hallways. We have bathrooms that kids can't get into during break because there's not enough bathroom facilities. We have teachers who are in three different classrooms moving from on carts to through these crazy hallways. Have you ever seen Mr. Ritchie with his crazy car trying to get to his classrooms? It's, it's not a reasonable situation. So we've been waiting and waiting and waiting to just, for our students to be able to have the breathing space they need. And what we're asking for, we're not saying, let's not share our facility all. We're saying, please make a solution that's going to honor the needs of Ocean View students and the, honor the needs of AMS students. There's a lot of. There's a lot of different solutions that are being thrown out there. We're talking about portals, we're talking about parts of construction, we're talking about all these different things. And what we're saying is that a solution that is a viable solution is one that both addresses and listens to Ocean View teachers and listens to what their needs are and also listens to AMS teachers who know, these teachers know their students, they know what the needs are. We have this many teachers across our district here because everyone cares so much about their students and wants things to work. We cannot accept a proposal moving forward that doesn't allow for the needs of an entire school to be met. So what we are asking for is for a proposal not to be accepted until we have come to some solution that meets both the needs of Ocean View and the needs of AMS. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so if I can ask, if I can ask two things. The board has been discussing this for an hour now and these people have been waiting for all evening. We're already past 10 o'clock, so first we need to extend the meeting. Let's extend it until 11 and hope we can be done by then. Second, I'm going to ask for public comment.
Doesn't somebody have to second your extension?
Yes.
Yeah, is anybody going to second it?
I'll second the extension till 11.
Okay. Second, I would like to hear from people. Please try to keep it short and.
And time them.
We do.
We did it before.
Yeah, we were.
We were, the timer's working.
Don't time the board members. But, okay, one thing, all right? Just, just to be clear on this, I want to hear from everybody. A board meeting is a meeting of the school board held in public. It is not a public meeting. We're here to discuss issues, but we do want to hear from you. But we do have limited time. We're actually way over our time. So please, keep it short. If somebody has already said what you want to say, just say, I agree, and let somebody else talk. We'll have to cut it off at some point so that the board can finish the discussion and either take action or table the item. But Charlie, do you have something really quick?
I do, actually. I'd like to request time to suggest a different approach. Well, I'll be happy to listen to what people have to say, but I want to put my cards on the table and just say, I'm not satisfied with any of the options I see here. And so therefore, I took the time to try to think through what I would like to see. I can't just vote E, none of the above without offering something. So I am prepared to do that at some point. I'm happy to wait until 11 o'clock to do that. Whatever you want to do.
Audrey.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Charlie. I think, I definitely want to hear what everyone has to say, but right now the solutions that have been proposed are not, I would not vote for because of the, it seems like it's elementary versus AMS right now.
Charlie, do you have something that will make everybody happy or?
No, I have something that'll make everybody unhappy.
Well, let's, let's start with, with public comment then.
My time's starting. I'm David Hopperd. I'm the assistant principal at the middle school. Been trying to hold on for an hour to what I wanted to say and not get bogged down or lost in anything, so I'm going to stick to my original talking point, which is a context and a concern. To go back to the budget discussion, we have budget cuts because the state underfunds public schools. And so I'd really like to ask the school board, the superintendent and the community to reach out to our new governor and to our new state superintendent of education to advocate to ask them to fix this problem so we're not here debating who gets to stay and who gets to go, what programs get to stay and what programs get to go. Nor are we asking, I'm not a taxpayer in Albany, I rent, but to not ask the Albany residents to continue to fund education here. My concern with both the budget decisions and the budget reductions and then the rehousing construction timeline is that I see that there is a need to have balanced, informed decisions that meet the needs of students at all school sites. I believe that we've been talking about budget cuts for about 18 months and we've been talking about construction and rehousing for longer than I've been in the school district, which is three and a half years. And my concern with continuing to prolong those discussions is that it takes away from meeting the needs of our students who are in the classrooms now. I have a third of my middle school staff who are up past their bedtimes at this board meeting because they're concerned about where they are going to be teaching and in what situations they'll be teaching. I would venture to say that most of Ocean View is probably here. As a school site leader, I think it would be remiss for me not to speak up for them that while we're having these conversations, while you all are making decisions, and I don't envy the decision you have to make, this is said with respect, but it takes away from the education that our students are receiving in the classroom. Our principals and assistant principals and district leaders are meeting during school, after school to come up with solutions that have nothing to do with students learning what they need to be learning to get ready for the next grade level. So while I understand that this is a very large task to undertake, I really do hope that the current board can come to some sort of swift resolution or recommendation for the next board if you all don't vote on it. Because the longer that this goes on, the increased there is an anxiety instability and we are not meeting the needs of our students who are currently sitting in our classrooms. Thank you.
My name is Maya Kim and I'm a first grade teacher at Ocean View. And I was a former AM PM kindergarten teacher at Ocean View for many years. And I'm here tonight to speak to hopefully temper some anxiety that future parents might have about an AM PM model. I understand that there are people here tonight to voice concerns about their incoming kindergartner having a reduced schedule. So I'm here tonight to hopefully speak to the hearts and minds of those concerned families worried that their incoming children will receive a lesser than experience than previous years. AM PM kindergarten was the Albany standard for decades. It worked. It worked well and it was beloved within the community. The reason the program was changed was solely based on staffing needs. Having an odd number of teachers was not conducive to the AM PM model. And as a former and one of the few remaining educators who's actually taught the AM PM kindergarten, I can tell you firsthand what an asset it is to have a program where there are two highly qualified teachers in the room. What I wouldn't give for that now. The kindergarten program is project and inquiry based, hands-on learning that will flourish with another teacher in the room. Twice the hands in the room, twice the hearts, twice the level of experience. That's an asset, not a detriment. Also, the level of respect that we have for our kindergarten teachers needs to be recognized as well. These are professional educators with master's degrees and PhDs in elementary education. Please trust in their professionalism, that they would never teach a lesser quality program based on instructional minutes provided. These minutes that are being lost are basically the time spent of walking children to the multipurpose room and having lunch and back. These are not educational minutes we're losing. I didn't want to have to speak tonight. I don't have a problem speaking in front of hordes of children, but speaking in front of adults is terrifying. I'm only here because I feel so strongly about supporting a viable option for Ocean View School. And so far, I'm only feeling that that option is option one. I'm actually shocked that there are so many opposing viewpoints. I'm dismayed and disappointed that people in our community think it's, it's okay to put our children in portables with no bathrooms or running water in the middle of a field adjacent to a construction site. I'm shocked that people are okay with that. Is this the best that we can do here, Albany? These are our youngest learners and someday they're going on to middle school and high school. Is this the highest quality of education we can provide for them? Portables on a field during construction? This is a community. A community is where people rally together to support each other in times of need. A community is where people make small sacrifices for the greater good of all. And using funds for temporary housing will have a permanent and detrimental effect on the outcome of the construction of both Ocean View and Marin Elementary Schools. With money spent on portables, we'll end up with two lesser schools. Is that the best we can do, Albany? Is that the legacy we want to leave? What would you want for your own child? As an AUSD teacher and parent, I'm in support of option one. Thank you.
And I think we can assume that all the people standing behind with the option one signs agree with that. Next.
Hi there. My name is Michelle Ling and I have a third grader and a first grader at Marin. And I also have an incoming kindergartner. Personally, I'm not crazy about the AM PM schedule, but if that's what's decided, then I accept it because it's for the greater good. But one thing I will mention though is as a parent and as you're trying to plan for your before and after school care, it's really hard when you're informed in the summertime which school your child's going to and if they're, you know, early or late bird. And if they're AM or PM, you really need a lot of time to be able to plan for that. So if we do go down that route, we have to tell people as soon as possible to give them more time to plan. And then the second thing is, and this is actually not my idea, but I heard somebody mention, since the high school seems to have capacity, could we possibly move the eighth graders to the high school? I don't know. But thank you.
I am the parent of a fourth grader and first grader at Ocean View and I came to say that I support option one. And I also wanted to raise a concern about option one A. I sent you all an email. I don't know if you've had time to read it, but I feel that keeping the quote unquote full day kindergarten would be great for the kids who end up at Marin and Cornell and really, really, really terrible for the kids who wind up on a field at Ocean View. I feel that that would be detrimental for the quality of kindergarten for those 80 to 100 kids. And that would be a really big detriment for a small gain in instructional minutes for the kids at the other schools. And I wanted to ask you to please consider the needs of all the kindergartners, including those who would be put on a portable in a field under option one A. Thank you very much.
My name is Sarah Bukowski and I am both a sixth grade teacher at the middle school and also a parent of elementary age kids. So I just, I'm here tonight because I just want to remind everybody about how packed AMS is. And when I say AMS is packed, I really mean we are packed. We are packed way beyond capacity. Years ago, when the bond measure passed and a few years ago, when decisions about the new school facility were being made, each teacher at AMS breathed an enormous sigh of relief. We thought that the days of overcrowded hallways, long bathroom lines, extremely unsafe stairways and countless teachers on carts would soon be a distant memory. Unfortunately, this dream was crushed last year when our principal announced that we would not be moving into the annex due to the need for temporary housing for Ocean View and Marin. It was at this moment that I started not only worrying, that I started not only worrying about my current student safety and wellbeing, but really started worrying about my own daughter and son's safety for they are just a couple of years away from coming to AMS. That night and many nights since that announcement was made, I went home and started researching more desirable public and private middle schools for my own children. That should really say something. As much as I believe in and am committed to AMS, there is no way I want my own children at AMS as it is severely overcrowded, unsafe and certainly physically uncomfortable for the majority of children there. Tonight, as the board is looking to make decisions, please keep in mind that it was determined that AMS was to be the first school building project because the need to reduce the crowding at the middle school was so desperately needed. Somehow that had been forgotten about. Please also keep in mind that there had been years that our superintendent and previous CBO could have been looking for viable alternatives for the elementary sites rather than waiting and to only be left to use the AMS site. That was very poor planning. Please do not make middle school students and middle school staff continue to bear the burden of an overcrowded and unsafe school. Please be a voice of reason and help reduce the overcrowding because something really must change. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, excuse me, Corinne Gata. I've been standing a long time with my mouth closed. My last name's Shulay. I came here tonight because I grew up on San Gabriel Avenue and my parents were very misinformed. They didn't understand what was going on. They thought that it was going to be an administration building. And so very recently, I, all of this mess you guys have just came to my attention. Now, growing up on San Gabriel, since I was a baby, I know that street better than any, anybody. I learned how to ride my bike on the McGregor School Ground. I went to McGregor School as a kindergartner. I played in the courtyard. We played in the apartment house. The street is not like it used to be when we could play in the street. There's cars constantly packed on that street. And from what I understand, from what was sent to me from some friends looking at the website on the map, where you're intending to have a loading and drop off and pickup zone is about 50 feet from my parents' front door. My parents are aging. There's Asian people on the street and not just thinking of my aging parents that may need medical support at some point, but thinking of the, this, you have a courtyard, an apartment, a school and another school directly across the street. Just driving there on Saturday, any person with any kind of brain could see that your traffic plan is unsafe. Your, and safety should be the primary concern for the residents and the students. And this is not what I'm hearing. This is, it's, you know, I understand you have a mess trying to transfer students. I'm glad my son is not that age now. However, however, really, honestly, you need to look really closely because what's going to happen when my dad has a heart attack and an ambulance can't get in to get him because he can't get out, because they can't get in or people can't get out? I mean, we had the ghost ship fire a couple of years ago. What happens when traffic is so backed up on San Gabriel that no services can get in? It's a real concern, not, again, not just for my parents, but for the entire community. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Just to be clear, it is the city's safety plan, not the school district's. We can give input to the city, but they make the decisions. Yes, I agree. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Camille Fisher. I'm a teacher at Albany Middle School and I teach math there. I just wanted to give you guys a little insight to what my day is and the struggles that I see, especially when we put on the table the discussion of the annex being used for Ocean View, which I completely understand that Ocean View has a lot of needs and I think that our school should help meet those needs. But I think we also need to take in consideration the needs of the Albany Middle School with students and the staff. So first, parking, I'm literally terrified to park close to school. I've had notes put on my car. I've heard of altercations with neighbors and with teachers. And so I park about a 10-minute walk from school and then I walk into school just so I can be safe. There's also been cops called and tickets being issued when I think it's really unfair. So I see the, the strain that is on the community and the neighborhood around and so I really understand that and so I want you to take that in consideration. Also, as a math teacher, I'm in three different classrooms on a cart. Also, as a math teacher, I'm in three different classrooms on a cart. It was rarely, very, a lot of angst, a lot of anxiety, like, leading up to the beginning of the school year, because I had to reconfigure this cart and figure out how I'm going to get all the supplies to my students in all these classrooms. I can't meet with my students before class. I can't meet with my students after class because I'm rushing in or I'm rushing out to get the class to be able to teach on time, because time is important. And if you want to model that, you need to, you need to be able to do that. It's also been a challenge when I notice strategies and things I want to do in the classroom, I have to throw them out and say, I can't, because I'll have to do that in three different classrooms, or I can't set that up and don't have all the necessary supplies. So as you guys move forward, I really strongly encourage to include Albany Middle School in the discussion for how the sites can be used. I know there's a lot of options out on the table. I think fourth and fifth grade being across the street is a good option because it does reduce the number of students that are moving in and out of the school. And also, having students on, on our campus from Ocean View in order to do PE or have recess, it's really going to hugely impact and make it even harder and more difficult and more challenging for students to be able to get the class and be able to communicate and hang out during lunch. So thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Hi, I'm here to represent a number of AMS parents who you've received emails from. This is not what we voted measure E for. You have left the AMS overcrowding out of this plan. Please finish the job that you started with, the annex building, put it to use, it was intended for, that the people of Albany voted for, and take care of the other schools in some other manner. The AMS overcrowding is serious. If you haven't been in Mr. Chisholm's band room, you should. They are literally tripping over each other. It is not safe. Please take care of AMS.
Hi, I'm Jane Stell and I'm a resident at San Gabriel Avenue. I live across the street from the new middle school annex. I definitely feel like a broken record because I've addressed many of you many times now. I was going to come up and say that I've been hearing a lot about pitting one school against another, but haven't heard much about the neighborhood. And now the last few comments, thank you, I am hearing that others have come up to address the same concern that I have. So I don't have tons of news to say, but I have learned some new things tonight. And I was really concerned, I'm just going to address you directly, Val, if you don't mind, that you said, you know, you haven't discarded any options, but, but when you have on, on your PowerPoint that you need to buy 23 out of those 29 portables, and that's obviously not true, because that doesn't account for the middle school portables that will be available when those middle school kids go to the annex, it makes me feel like, hmm, that, that's, that doesn't feel completely like you're honestly considering that option when, when you disregard some of the available portables. But overall, I would say that I sent detailed comments on, really on my own behalf, but I'm going to go so far as to speak for my neighbors too, who've also been very concerned about this. I sent an email to the board, I got replies from two of them and was assured, because it really felt like a done deal, like, option one was it and nothing else was being considered, and this, our street was just going to have to put up with 300 more kids and 20 more teachers and untold numbers, more cars, because it's just the way it was. I was told that that is not the case, and I'm really, really heartened to hear the discussion has happened tonight. It makes me feel like, it's honestly, it's, it's not a done deal and you are listening, so thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cheryl Thies. I am a parent of five kids who've come through the Albany School. I currently have a seventh grader at Albany Middle School, and I'm also an education advocate at the Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund, where we get a number of calls about Albany Middle School crowding, for our children with autism, for our children with sensory overwhelm, the noise, the crowding, the bullying, the statements. I also have a gender variant kid right now who is dealing with the fact that there are no real accessible gender neutral bathrooms at AMS. She has to either go into the office or an out himself, or go to, through the special ed room where students are learning and get into the bathroom that way, it's not always available. So I have a lot of concerns, both as a parent and also as an advocate, about what we're doing here. I've had kids at Ocean View, I, I think our littlest kids are our most vulnerable in a lot of ways, but we have almost 1,000 kids with all the hormones that come with that and all the issues, we talked earlier about mental health issues. We have many children in this district who are in charter schools and private schools because AMS is so crowded. And I spent today looking at another school for my child. I have been in this district for 35 years, but my child, she's too crowded, she, like, gender comments, the, there's no way for staff to monitor, the staff are wonderful, but they cannot be there when the, when the halls are so crowded that my kid can't get through without dealing with somebody's underhanded comment. It's a big issue. So I feel like we are literally tying the hands of our middle school teachers and staff and administrators, because they simply cannot, you couldn't put enough adults in to monitor a space like that at a time when the kids, and I'm saying this to you because my oldest child is 42 years old, middle school is hell. It's the hardest possible time. And I'm going to read my child's statement, because he could not be here this evening, because I feel like it speaks for itself. He says, "My name is Liam Thies, I'm in seventh grade at AMS. I'm writing because the crowding at AMS is really stressful. Kids say things adults don't hear about kids' looks, gender, or just mean things in general. When I'm changing classes, I feel totally stressed out. Sometimes I just go see the counselor instead of going to class, because walking through the crowded halls is just too much. My anxiety really goes up at lunch, because even though I love lunch, it's my favorite subject, ha, ha, ha. I get so stressed out by all the noise and the pushing and the shoving and the talking, that I look for a quiet place to be and after lunch, I can't focus for the rest of the afternoon." I can tell you that that's true. I really hope that you will find a way to give as much of the space, my kid is very fair, to AMS as possible. We're looking at different schools, because I can't take the stress at AMS, and it really makes me sad to leave my friends. Also, she wanted to say, he wanted to say, I'm, I'm in transition too. Also, the counselors are really important to AMS kids. There's a lot of times when I couldn't get back to class if I wasn't able to talk to a counselor for a minute. Cutting counselors is like cutting the heart out of the school. Ms. Brolin, the counselors are like the best thing about AMS besides my friends, so I wanted to put the shout out there. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Venetia. I have a sixth grader and an eighth grader. And I, I am an educator and I actually teach in ed leadership. And I wasn't intending to talk tonight, but this appears to be a crisis of leadership in so many ways. I'm just so touched by the educators who are here and speaking what they need, and I'm so stunned that we are pitting our schools against each other and what it means for people who will be sending their children on from Ocean View and Marin into the middle school, given the climate that's been established with this issue. And so I really want to urge you all to rethink how you're leading this issue and, and really listen to, my kids absolutely love middle school. I've never heard of kids loving middle school. You do an amazing job, I think, with the overcrowding and the sitting on the floor and being stepped on while you eat lunch in the smoke. And the pushing and the shoving, it's really rough, yet they love it because of how amazing everyone is. So please listen to them and listen to the folks here about what they need. There have to be more creative solutions. There have to be other ways to deal with this. Thank you.
Can I get a show of hands, how many people are waiting to talk now? Okay, so you'll be the last, and I want to hear Charlie's suggestion.
Hi, guys. I'm Stephanie Holm. I'm a parent of a current TK student over at Albany Children's Center. She'll be in kindergarten next year. And I'm also a pediatrician by training. I'm up here because a number of us who currently have kids in TK have spoken at length about our concerns of moving our kids back to an AM PM schedule next year, given that they've been in all-day school thus far. And I know a number of us have passed along those concerns to all of you board members and, and thank you all for all of the time that you've spent on this. And I also want to say that none of us want to be pitted against the middle school either, right? Like, we, we all hear your concerns and, and I definitely want the middle schoolers to be safe as well, as I know we all do. And so that's not our intent. And I also hear your point that none of the kindergarten teachers would ever deliver substandard teaching. And I fully believe that. We've had really good experiences in the district so far, despite some craziness and upheaval that's been going on. However, as a pediatrician, those early years are super important. Contact time with adults who speak, who talk and read and sing, as Alameda County likes to say, to our kids makes a huge difference. And so even though that's not necessarily instructional time, per se, right? That's time that there's an adult with them specifically there whose job is to talk and read and sing to those kids. That's going to disproportionately affect our kids who already come from disadvantaged backgrounds. We already have achievement gaps in Albany. I know it's something that we've talked about at prior board meetings. You know, that's going to disproportionately affect those kids. And so I really think we need to be talking about other creative solutions that will both help with overcrowding at the middle school, but also not push our kids back to a shorter school day schedule. And I just wanted to, because I know there are a bunch of us here and I sort of said that I would talk on behalf of the group, I hope what I said was okay, but the parents who are, have ingo, kindergarteners who are against the AM PM, just raise their hands. We weren't organized to make signs like the option one, folks. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Daniel Watson. I have, I have kids in a fourth grader at Cornell and a seventh grader at Albany Middle School. And I guess I'd like to, to go back to something that was said initially is, is, and, and the intent of measure E and is, is this illegal use of bond monies. And I'm not sure if you were talking about measure E, because the, the point, not only was it, the intent was to reduce overcrowding, but now students are being penalized. And instead of reducing overcrowding, you're increasing overcrowding. So they are being penalized for having this, this annex built across the street. So that, I'm not sure, I'd actually like, I don't know if it was a city attorney, but I'd like to know what was asked of that city attorney, and I don't know who got the answer, but we, I, you know, I'm very concerned that I voted for measure E to reduce overcrowding and instead it's increasing.
Good evening, I have an eighth grader at Albany Middle School, and I want to thank all of you guys for hearing everybody out, but I also want to be able, at the same note, ask that you not make a decision tonight. Right now, what's, what's happened in this entire evening, for the last few hours, that we're all willing to stay here however long it takes, if a decision's going to be made tonight, to try and convince you about doing the right thing. But what we've all witnessed to tonight is how we're being pitted against each other. And all of our children, whether they're kindergartners, middle school or high school, they're all affected, will be affected by this. And, and I can just ask of you to be able to consider other options. I think of all the board members up here, the only one I've heard with at least an option was Jacob, you know, and, and I appreciate that word, because at least there's putting more, more consideration into what's being presented before everybody. But making hasty decisions is not going to serve our community and much less our children. So all I ask is that you take a pause tonight and make, wait on making a decision, especially one with such weight on everyone's shoulders, whether you're a parent, whether you're a teacher or an administrator, this is just too heavy of a decision to make too hastily. And I know that you, as a superintendent, have had a lot of opportunities, a lot of different conversations that none of us have been privy to. But I, as a voter, I remember that when I cast that ballot is to make sure that when my kid was in elementary school, he wasn't going to have a problem when he went to middle school. And my kid, as, and a lot of other parents at the middle school, they're running to try and at least get their lunch or get to the bathroom so that they're not late. So all I ask is that before you make that decision tonight, don't make it and give all of us an opportunity to be able to continue to have this conversation. Thank you.
With that, Charlie, can we, can we hear your proposal?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Wait, wait.
What? One more?
Can we?
My apologies, I didn't speak up earlier, I wasn't sure I was going to speak. I'm a parent of a fourth grader, she was actually in the room earlier. She was the one who gave a loud gasp of shock when it was like, there would be portables on the blacktop and this space would not be available for play. So she went, oh! So, so I realize the importance of play for children. I know how much she loves to run at recess. And of the options that are presently there, I think there is a preference for option one. I will also say that, as a parent of a child in Albany, I actually had not heard all of the issues at the middle school. And I will take it upon myself, maybe it was, I was just completely ignorant, head in the sand, didn't know. On the other hand, I don't recall ever seeing all of the needs of all the schools in Albany laid out for me, in a, in a way that I could actually see them. I mean, I don't, I don't want to be pitted against any other parent or teacher or, or child. I know my child will go to the middle school. And it's not like I want to deal with it then. None of us wants that, or, or to deal with problems at the high school when they're there. I mean, this, the need to be holistic in our solutions is extremely challenging, I realize, and timely as well. Right? That's holistic and timely, holistic and timely. How do we, how do we manage that? But it just seems like, always, the, the one thing that I hear uniting so many of us is our pride in being here, in being our little community. And it's, and perhaps the size is what, part of what makes it so challenging to find alternative and creative solutions, because we're small. It's not like we have large plots of land to put kids. But that's also our, one of our greatest strengths, that, that we're this little community. And our, our children are, are interdependent in this, in this way. So I just, I, I know everything that the, that the Ocean View staff has gone through. And their fears, that, very clear fears, that the delays will mean money, will mean loss of money and loss of programs and, and effective construction, that there'll be extreme demands on staff and the principal and the school and the kids. It just feels like some things, we're not there yet. We're not there.
I promise I will take less than a minute. I am Toni Martinez Borgfeld. I am a Spanish teacher at Albany Middle School. And I just wanted to say, besides all of what parents and my coworkers have expressed, it's not just about the, the hallways and the lunch. The quality of education that we can provide when we have our own room versus having to travel from one room to another and having to share a classroom with a colleague is radically different. The, like, in a, the, for the first three years that I taught at Albany Middle School, I had to share, both share classrooms and travel to classrooms. And it just makes such a big difference, having to have a space where I can put the visual aids that my students need on the walls versus just putting them in half of the classroom, because the other half is math and, you know, and, and then I have to do double the materials, because then I can just put these posters here and these others ones, these other ones in the other room, which also increases the costs of the things that I have to do. And it's versus putting one or having a full library in my classroom versus just having a tiny library, because then I have to share the space with the math books, et cetera. So besides the stress of having to move and the stress of the kids having to move through these crowded spaces, the time that we're actually in the classroom is radically different when we can be there for our students the whole time and the quality of the education that we can give our students, when we don't have to be juggling through these, these very reduced spaces, is, just really makes a difference on, on what we can provide for our schools, so, for our kids. So it's not just about convenience or physical, you know, juggling, it's about the quality of the time that we are actually in the classroom is significantly different than if we have to keep sharing and moving and all that stuff. So, thank you.
Charlie.
So, thank you. As I said before, I'm not actually satisfied with any of the options, but I can't just leave it at that. I have to offer something. And so, in the spirit of offering something which is not necessarily going to be the direction this goes, I, I offer it just to indicate that there are some other possibilities. There are some ideas that haven't been examined. I think what we need to do is we need to think systemically. We have two big issues. We have two big issues: building new buildings and balancing our general fund budget. We need to think about how we can do both of those. And so what we do in the building program needs to help us with our general fund shortfall. So, there's probably multiple ways to do this. This is just one concept. Number one, through collective bargaining that would establish maximum average class sizes, temporarily allow K3 class sizes to increase without loss of state K3 class size funding. That can be done. Number two, temporarily allow class sizes at grades four and five to increase. That can be done. Number three, add paraeducators to larger classes. We used to do that. Number four, allow all parents to opt to attend any elementary school. With that, accommodate up to half of the Ocean View students at Cornell and Marin without adding new portables by using existing classrooms. Cornell used to have 540 students with one portable. It can be done. Number six, no, I think I skipped one. Yeah, number five. Temporarily operate a half-size Ocean View elementary using the existing buildings and existing portables. This could be done in several ways. It could be three grade levels, it could be two classes at each grade level, there are other possibilities. We've had an elementary school west of San Pablo Avenue since about 1943. If we shut it down, there will be no elementary school west of San Pablo Avenue. It can be choice. People don't have to attend if they prefer Cornell and Marin, or they could attend. I think we probably can expect that there are parents who would be perhaps preferring to attend their neighborhood school. Okay, now I think we're up to number six. We move the four AMS portables from the AMS parking lot to the Ocean View parking lot. The idea that we would put portables on Ocean View field is a non-starter, but there's blacktop available. We've done this before. There used to be four portables on the Ocean View parking lot when it was Albany Middle School. So, I offer that as an idea, just to show that we haven't thought through all the possibilities. What would that do for us? It would let the district keep the promise that appears in Measure E to relieve overcrowding at Albany Middle School. It keeps a small elementary school west of San Pablo Avenue. There's no reduction in instructional minutes for any grade level. And it supports our budget reduction process. Ultimately, I think, we heard earlier, we have a budget that needs attention. There's no alternative but to ultimately reduce staffing. This buys us time. It can be a temporary increase in class sizes and those, that can be changed later. I think the most important thing in all of this is that we have to lock in that guaranteed maximum price by January 22nd. That's the one deadline that we have to meet. Everything else can take a little bit longer, we can take a little bit more time, we can explore more ideas if we have to. That's one. It hasn't appeared. I put it out there just to say, think about some other possibilities.
Ross?
So I understand sort of half of what you're telling me because I've not been a party to any of the Ocean View construction discussion because that's been a subcommittee and not the boards to be aware of. It sounded to me like you were saying, sort of, reduce the size of Ocean View. You mean while some construction happens.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, my proposal a while back of, why don't we build a two-story annex along Buchanan and leave the rest of the site untouched, could be one of those options. I don't know. This is why I would kick this all back to the new board and especially looking at where we think we're going to end up with construction before we make a decision on who moves where.
Absolutely. What you can actually do at the Ocean View site is dependent upon who wins the bid. They all have different proposals and exactly which space is still available depends upon the winning bid. But I think that there is, in all cases, the possibility of maintaining a school presence there. Every one of those firms is used to building on an occupied site. They know how to do that. I think the key thing here is, I hear people when they express a concern about being there and we don't want to force anybody to be there if they don't want to be. So we need to preserve that option so that parents have full choice whether they prefer their neighborhood school, which will be impacted somewhat by construction, or whether they prefer Cornell and Marin.
My one last caution on the, and then in January we will, is I think we took many board meetings to talk about the AMS annex. I mean, there was an AMS annex plan and then it was pared back and then it was rejiggered and et cetera. I have no great expectations that the next board will show up in January, be ready to roll, and there will be a plan delivered that they'll vote on and approve. So I would buffer in more time than the more optimistic of us might to decide where the construction ends up. But I would absolutely put in front of the next board those decisions on construction before we move anybody anywhere.
Okay, we got an impassioned plea from the Ocean View principal earlier to make a decision tonight because the time it takes to prepare. I'm not, at this late hour, going to fight to make a decision tonight because I don't think the board is ready to. But I do want to caution that we don't push it off too far because there will be a real burden on the staff of Ocean View if we, if the decision isn't made pretty soon. Jacob?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something real quick about the possible scenario I brought up earlier. I knew it really wasn't feasible. I just wanted to kind of throw it out there to show other people that there was other options. It would seem like we were kind of painted into a corner that option one was the only option that was viable. And after hearing some of Charlie's suggestions and some of the other community members and emails, maybe we should look at a different option, which maybe we don't even know exists right now. Option B, option, option 1B, 1C, 1D. So I'm very happy that everyone is here and we had this conversation because it was never finally decided on. And I'm really happy that we had so many people come and send emails. And I know that everybody wants what's best for our community. And I'm sorry that it got a little bit heated and I don't like seeing certain sites and groups of people being pitted against each other. And I hope that we can avoid that in the future as we move along, not just with the student housing, but with the budget cuts. I've seen this happen before where I work at, when times get tough, people have the best intentions, but it gets kind of out of hand and I don't think that's what anybody wants. So I'm just very happy that we're discussing different possible options.
You want to speak? Okay, make it quick.
Thank you all for giving me three minutes, 2:57. I'm Rachel Anderson. I'm a parent at Ocean View. I'm part of the Design Build Committee. I'm part of the Site Council. I was part of the first budget committee before, anyhow, involved. Care deeply about this community and I want to echo a lot of what I heard here tonight. Primarily, Jessica, are you still here? Where she said, "There are no good decisions here." And I, when we decided as a community to keep Albany students in Albany, we were making that devil's bargain, that somewhere our students were going to have to be housed. And in doing that, we as a parent community at Ocean View, knowing that we are the first site to undergo this construction, are taking on the role of the guinea pigs to figure out this messy process with our most prized possessions. And I know that none of you take that responsibility lightly either. And I want to thank you for the time and effort and thought going into this. But I want to echo what Terry said tonight as well, that every month that we delay, our buying power is decreased. If we want to have schools that we can be proud of, there is a time element here. And more than that, if we want to have a school community we can be proud of, we need to start pointing all of us, whether we are elementary, middle or high school students, families, in the same direction. And it is something at Ocean View, getting all of our parents rallied to be here to hold up option one signs when clearly it's not a great option for our students to be divided up across the district, to have to travel to multiple sites, to manage all of those competing demands with an eye towards the future. And that is what I'm asking all of us, the adults in the room, to keep in mind. My kids are not going to see a benefit of what's happening, but I know that my neighbor's kids will. And that is what we're talking about when we join a community. And that's what I'm asking for in our Ocean View community, for us to have enough time to get behind whatever proposition is laid out from the board, from the district, so that our teachers, our administrators, our families can be as prepared as possible to weather this disruption, whatever it looks like. And I know that this is an inenviable position that you all are in. And I am glad that it is you and not I in that position.[1265.23][1265.23](laughter) But I do ask that while we are casting about for other options, that we are also taking into account the considered options put in front of us, while they are ugly and hairy, it's not as if they were pulled from the ether. And I would love to see a magical solution that solves all of these problems, but I want all of us, the adults in the room, to get comfortable with the fact that it's going to be hard. And the only way we can make this easier is if we all agree that it's going to be hard and we're going to do it together. Because we're Albany. If we, with our three elementary schools, one middle and one high school, can't fix this educational mess, how are we going to do it as a nation?[1311.41][1311.41](laughter) And I'm asking you all, as a progressive voter who's watching what's happening and really hoping that my small town can be a test case for what's possible. And I ask you all to join us, Ocean View families, for this roller coaster ride because we are your students. Maybe not today, but we will be soon. And we are your parents. Maybe not today, but we will be soon. And those conversations we're having last. So please be careful with your words, all of us. Thank you.
Okay, so, board, this is an action item on the agenda. It can be tabled. We could pick one of the options and just direct staff to do that. Or we could ask staff to come back with a revised option based on some criteria that we decide on now. Or maybe somebody else has another idea. Jacob had some ideas, Charlie had some ideas. It's possible that with the addition of two portables, we could make some more room at the middle school. There's room at the middle school to put portables. I mean, at the annex, there's room for portables there. There's, as you know, some of you have said, not all the options have been considered. But we also know that a decision needs to be made pretty soon. Kim?
Well, I had some ideas too that were put out much earlier that people don't, that I'm not getting any acknowledgement for here. But I'm the one who mentioned the idea of having fourth and fifth at the annex, which would allow a share. And, yeah...
Right, well, fourth and fifth at the annex is good, but then you still need to figure where one, two and three are going.
Right, and that would be maintaining a school west of San Pablo, maintaining a half-size Ocean View. Yeah, so maybe I clearly didn't explain it very well, it's very late. So I just want to say, I think we should table this now, send it back to staff. I think there've been a number of ideas that have come forward from the community, from the teachers, from the board and from the administration that need to be considered. I think that my take home is that the annex must be a shared space.[1487.83][1487.83](applause)
So the instruction to staff would be, come back with a modified option that gives the middle school use of at least part of the annex.
Somehow increases space for the middle school.
Jacob?
Yeah, I agree with what Kim is saying. We do need to work together. And a lot of the emails that I got said that we need to compromise, so I'm glad that we are having this further discussion. I would like the middle school to be able to use the Drama Center and a couple of the classrooms and the, maybe administrative room or whatever, which I think was told to them originally. I would also like to have it to where kindergarten can stay on the AMPMs. Sorry, the early bird, late bird schedule. I know that's an awful lot to ask and we don't have that much time left, but if we're talking about still keeping some people at Ocean View, I think it can be accomplished where, from the emails that I've received, that was a lot of the people saying, middle school should have some use of some of their site and please at all costs, keep early bird, late bird.
Okay. The emails that I got were about half and half on early bird, late bird or not, or or AMPM, but that, I'm glad to leave it up to you guys to make that decision later. Do we have a clear instruction for staff? That's really the question here.
She's saying no.
Okay.
So, let me muddy it a little further then. You know, I think that we can table it tonight. I think it does need some more work. I would hope that what staff can do is not just bring back some minor changes to the existing options. If, I mean, if that's part of the package, great. And it might turn out that one of them with some minor change is in fact the right way to go. But I would hope that there would be some additional effort put into something different. It doesn't have to be exactly what I described, but my sense is that there are some ideas that would move us forward, that could help address our budget deficit at the same time as moving us forward on the building program. That's the kind of innovation that I'd like to see. I'd like to see something creative that helps us deal with both of those, that gets us thinking systemically about what needs to be done. So I would hope that what comes back includes something like that. Now, that's going to take a little time, you know, a day or two maybe. And I think Ross's point is well taken, that until we actually have a proposed bid, it's going to be hard for people to decide. You have to see what the site looks like. I'm sensitive to the cost escalation. I think that can be dealt with by just making sure that the winning bid is adopted January 22nd with its guaranteed maximum price. After that, the cost escalation is the contractor's problem, not ours. So, you know, I don't know how much time staff need to actually bring something back. If it's before January 22nd, I'm sure that's great. If it's afterwards, I don't necessarily see a problem with that.
Well, okay. Val?
Thank you. I think we could come up with a lot of ideas. I could listen to the, tonight's video and create lots of options. And then we still need to sit down with the Ocean View staff and the Marin staff, the Cornell staff and the middle school staff and the high school staff. I need some parameters. So I'm going to go back to what Jacob started and Kim said as well. I need to know what the, I'm going to sort of call them the non-negotiables. Does this board want to make sure that Kinder keeps the early bird, late bird schedule? Because that helps make some boundaries on this, on a decision and on ideas. Does this board want to give Albany Middle School the use of their Drama Room, two classrooms, some admin space? And I'm going... And I'm going to add in there as well, there was conversation about the... And I'm going to add in there as well, there was conversation about the computer room. So I need some specific parameters on what the board says. Come back with an idea that has these things in place. Do you want me to move portables from the middle school? Because that's going to help me formulate an idea, because I have to be able to take it back to the principals and say, these are the parameters. Let's come up with an idea. And we're all going to come up with them together. I've met with the elementary school principals. I've met with the middle and high school principal. I have to take it back to them. And they, in turn, will probably take it back, I hope, to their staff. So please give me some boundaries that I can take back.
Okay, we're at 11 o'clock. Can we extend a little more?
We've just done the meeting for 15 minutes.
Okay. I'm going to suggest, I'm not going to have to vote on this, so, you know, Kim and Jacob, I think, should have more say in this than I do. I'm going to suggest that there be, again, two options, one with AMPM and one with early bird, late bird, just so if there is a difference in cost or convenience that we -- that you can see it. But I would -- what I'm hearing from the board is a strong preference for some shared use of the middle school space, but that doesn't -- and, you know, Charlie has ideas that possibly would make this possible without costing a lot of extra money. Jacob had ideas as well, because we want to preserve as much money as possible for Marin construction. So that still sounds a little vague to me. Does anyone want to narrow it down anymore?
Yeah, I mean, you said it pretty good. I mean, middle school gets some of their facilities, and then they all get together and they work it out the best they can. I'm not so sure why just the kindergarten has to have two different options. That would be like saying, well, we want two different options where whatever the other competing stakeholder groups are.
Well, there could be any number of options, sure.
Why is just the kindergarten one coming back as we need to have both different options? Because I was pretty clear about, I want kindergarten to be early bird, late bird.
No, that's clear from you. We heard, but then were all those guys, those people up here?
That had to do with keeping Option One in place. Now that Option One looks like it might be tweaked a little bit, I'm sure that that might change a little bit.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Kim?
I think that my criteria that I set was that the annex is a shared space, okay? And then I didn't mind your idea about having at least one idea that had early bird, late bird kindergarten, and at least one idea that had AMPM kindergarten. So that, I think that both of those need to be seen. And I think that that's enough structure, because I think when you start putting a bunch of criteria around things, that, you know, you're reducing your field of solutions. I think that's adequate. Does anybody else want to add anything?
So...
Yeah, Ross wanted to speak. You still need...
You know, I have to say, it feels like we're part of the state room assignment planning committee on the Titanic, and the berg is still out there. So let me, as homework, ask the three incoming board members, who are all sitting down here in the room, to be ready for that January meeting, to be able to ask questions of what the heck do you want to build and why, and what other options were considered. Or better, don't go into the January meeting having that be the first time you see a proposal. Read into it now. There's been a site committee meeting. You can start digesting what I haven't even seen as to the future of Ocean View. We've got right now one site nearing completion, no other DSA-approved plans, and a big, flat acre of dirt at the high school, and that is our building program currently. So I'd say we're jumping the gun to decide on moving people here, there, or the other way, if we haven't got a good idea of what actually will be built at Ocean View, what that leaves us to build at Marin, and is that a good enough thing for this town?
When is that bid process going to be complete? Do anyone know?
For Ocean View? The bids are due December 21st.
Okay.
And there will be a process of scoring, and yes, staff will be ready to bring the winning bid, the second meeting in January. It's an objective scoring process, and so I don't know that there's a choice. I think the board can either approve or reject the winning bid. The board doesn't have the opportunity to pick and choose. It's an objective scoring process.
Yes, right. So is the proposal, then, that we table this, bring it back at the second meeting in January with the Ocean View bid, so that that's part of the consideration? That is pushing it pretty late for...
Why are we jumping from now all the way to January 22nd? We have a board meeting on the 11th, and then we have one in January before that.
Well, because I heard people asking to see the Ocean View bid before they made this decision.
I thought you said the bid was 21st of December.
Yeah, the bid will -- the bids are due from the contractors December 21st.
Then they have to be ranked, and one chosen.
They have to be ranked, and a decision has to be made. I don't know how long staff are going to need to do that, and whether that actually -- I think that the reason it's scheduled for January 22nd is it won't be ready for the first meeting in January.
So we're not going to have any further discussion on this, and then we're just going to wait till the 22nd, and then it's just dropped back on us again?
It's up to you.
And now we're up against a wall again?
It's really up to you and Kim Jacob. I don't want to make that decision.
You know, my suggestion would be bring it up as a discussion item next board meeting.
That's what I'm talking about.
You know, let the new board establish the schedule.
If they want to talk about it or not, yeah, let them weigh in.
So not review and action, but review and discussion at the next board meeting? Is that seem right to you, Jacob?
Seems right to me.
Yeah, sounds good.
Jackie is saying something.
I just have a question to clarify. So one of the options was leasing another school outside of Albany. Can we eliminate that option at least, so we can focus on the other options?
Right. Are there any options that we can rule out now?
Right, busing students and move our students to outside of Albany for...
I don't think we've seen any viable proposal for that coming forward, and I don't see any -- I don't have any expectation that there would be one. I mean, you've done due diligence. You've looked at possibilities. There are none.
We can drop that off.
I wouldn't spend much time on that, and I wouldn't spend any time at all on thinking about putting portables on the field part of Ocean View field. That's a nonstarter. I think I would spend time and think seriously about how much blacktop you have. You know, I didn't see any proposal to consider putting portables on the parking lot at Ocean View, which is where they used to be. And so it left me wondering, have we really looked at the whole package?
Right. And we also remember that when we took out the culinary classroom at the middle school annex, the utilities were supposed to be built, put in anyway. I don't know if they were. But that's a space that some portables could be dropped on without really much problem. So there's some room there for portables as well. Ross, and then Kim.
Just to say something very quickly for the public on the process. So this is the last full board meeting for Paul, Charlie, and myself. The next board meeting in two weeks will have all of us, five, meet. We'll be recognized for our service, et cetera, et cetera, in the first five, 10 minutes, whatever, and then we will step down. And three board members-elect who are here will be the board members then. So two weeks from tonight can be a discussion of this by the new board. Three of us have no, after this meeting tonight, no effective other than shake hands and get plaques. So it will be those three board members-elect and the four you see at the other end of the dais weighing in on the next round.
So I have a clarifying question. Is the board asking that staff come back with, what I'm seeing now, is at least two options for review and discussion on the December 11th meeting?
I think that's what they said, right?
That gives me very little time to meet with staff and have them go back, or meet with principals and have them go back and check with staff, so...
It's a discussion.
I'm hearing two different topics on December 11th.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to suggest that you should try to bring back options December 11th. I don't know if anybody else was thinking along those lines. I just thought that what you should bring back would be a chance for the new board to tell you what it wants you to do. That's really all that I think you should do. I mean, we could talk about schedule, but it's not this board that's going to determine that schedule. You need to ask the next board when it wants to schedule these.
Okay. Kim?
Yes, I'm sorry. I think I shook my head yes, but I meant no. Yeah, for December 11th, I think what we're doing is not to hear new scenarios, but to give the new board a chance to give you some direction in terms of what, you know, when they want to see these new scenarios in the new year.
Okay. Jacob, do you agree with that?
Yeah, and if we're actually going to -- well, I guess it doesn't matter. We're going to have them come on. They can give their input, and I'll save my comments for next time.
I move that we table this item.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that actually brings us to the end of the meeting, except for agenda items introduced by the board.